And I support the people's budget. Your commitment to funding mental health response and violence prevention is a first step for public safety, but the people's budget is how profound change will begin in Minneapolis. The 4% that was taken out of MPD's funding will not change the violence that MPD has and will continue to cause to Black, Brown, and communities if we don't act now. Time and time again, we've seen that program similar to what Mayor Frye has proposed are unsuccessful in creating impactful change. The people's budget will allow access to resources to keep community members safe and begin having their needs met. If Mayor Frye vetoes this budget, the minimum expectation is that you uphold the budget as passed. Thank you.
Thank you Paisley. The next speaker is number 79, Maya Lemon.
My name is Maya Lemon.
Hi Maya.
Hi, my name is Maya Lemon and I live in Ward 9. I'm here to urge the city council to pass Safety For All today and the people's budget in the future. Do not water down Safety For All. Please pass it in its entirety today. I want to speak specifically to Councilmember Kano. As one of your constituents, I want to make it clear that I'm looking for you today to follow through on your commitment that you made this summer to defund MPD and today support Safety For All. To Mayor Frye, I continue to be shocked at your lack of accountability to your constituents. I hope that you have listened to the concerns and the belief of your constituents and will allow for the passage of Safety For All. Thank you.
Thank you Maya. Speaker number 80 is Mary Hallett. Speaker number 80, Mary Hallett.
Hello, this is...
Hello?
Yeah, hi. Sorry about that. It muted me and then unmuted me. Hi, I'm Mary Hallett. I'm a 30-year resident of Ward 1. I believe the police department has a cultural issue and is in need of serious reform. However, neither the people's budget nor the Safety For All plan address this problem. Anyone who believes a punitive reduction in the police department's budget and a shift in their duties will resolve the underlying issues within the police department is misguided. Neither the people's budget nor the Safety For All plan have tangible goals or targets to reduce crime, which is running rampant now. We cannot ignore this fact. I implore the council to collaborate with the police department and the mayor rather than this posturing behavior. Spend the time to develop a comprehensive plan which addresses short-term and long-term issues. Let's take a both-and approach. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mary. Speaker number 81 is Chris Parsons. Speaker number 81, Chris Parsons.
Good evening, Madam President. My name is Chris Parsons and I reside in Ward 10. I'm calling in support of Mayor Frye's budget as it pertains to public safety. Madam President, Marion Wester defines brinksmanship as "the art or practice of pushing a dangerous situation or confrontation to the limit of safety, especially to force a desired outcome." Even the casual observer can see that this is a tactic being deployed by those on the council who wish to push this budget through. Your plan to defund the police department during a pandemic-fueled rising crime is irresponsible. At best, I've watched the council rush debate of this, uh, of this, um, public safety budget. The data you are basing your concepts on are from research that is very limited and data that is cherry-picked. I support many of your goals, but you need to take it back to the drawing board and allow for more or allow for proper amount of input and deliberation. This is what we expect and deserve from the Minneapolis City Council. For members that have not weighed in on this debate substantially, now is the time to do your job.
Thank you, Chris. And you can, uh, send in your, um, complete comments via email. The next speaker is number 82, Jasenay Patterson. Speaker number 82, Jasenay Patterson.
I'm Jasenay Patterson. I'm a recent graduate from the University of Northwestern St. Paul. I currently work for Black Women's Wealth Alliance founded by Kenya McKnight. Black Women's Wealth Alliance is a member of the Minneapolis Forward Coalition to help create a legislative agenda to rebuild, recreate, and recreate the city. This is not led by the city in Minneapolis. This is led by community members. The Minneapolis Forward Coalition is dedicated to creating a more holistic approach to design a safe, healthy, and vibrant community. Public safety is broader than just the police. There are many contributions to a safe society. Police brutality is an issue that does need to be addressed. However, I do believe both budgets proposed are looking over a few things. Drug and alcohol abuse, sex trafficking, poverty, unemployment, and a lack of resources, all of this contributes to a safer community. If we have a more economically stable community, this in itself starts to build and nurture a healthier community, which produces a safer community. I encourage that we all take this into consideration when making a final decision on the city's budget, especially when the whole country is looking at it.
Thank you so much Jasenay. Please send in your complete comments via email. Speaker number 83 is Ben Griswold. Speaker number 83, Ben Griswold. Speaker number 84 is Ellie Fireside. Speaker number 84, Ellie Fireside.
Hi, this is Ellie. My name is Ellie Fireside Ostergaard and I live in Ward 10. I'm speaking in support of the people's budget. Uh, thank you all for passing Safety For All. It is a step, but we need so much more. Um, and at the very least, please do not weaken Safety For All. It is already quite moderate. Um, for people to really thrive in Minneapolis, we need to pass People's Budget and shift our priorities so that people can actually get their most basic needs met. Also, Mayor Frye's threat to veto the budget is irresponsible and dangerous. I hope he doesn't, but if he does, uh, I hope that the council will stand by the budget as passed and support the city and its people over MPD's bottom line. Thank you.
Thank you Ellie. Uh, next speaker, number 85, Nicholas Hall.
My name is Nicholas Hall. I'm a commercial property and business owner in ECCO. I'm a 50-year resident of the city and I represent over 100 businesses and property owners that wholeheartedly support the mayor's plan not to reduce any more funding to the police. Further cuts could be potentially catastrophic to the safety of our businesses and customers, properties, and tenants. Police reform is necessary, but not during today's radical environment. Going against the overwhelming majority of your constituents, supporting the police will cost the city council members their seats when it comes to a reelection. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Speaker number 86 is Michelle Ramirez Estrada. Speaker number 86, Michelle Ramirez Estrada. Speaker number 87 is Kai Wicker. Speaker number 87, Kai Wicker. Speaker number 88, Robert Foley.
My name is Robert Foley. I live in, uh, Ward 8. I moved here in, uh, 2016, about four and a half years ago. For the last four years, I've had zero safety concerns, day or night. I felt free and comfortable to walk in my neighborhood. In the last six months, I hear gunshots at least every other week. A house across the street from me was targeted twice in the same week with a total of 24 gunshots. Carjackings, armed robberies, home invasions are all up exponentially and I no longer feel safe in my own neighborhood. This comes as a direct result of a reduction in the police force. I say this realizing my own privilege as a white male, but I also say this as a criminal defense attorney who wants nothing more than better police. We need better police. We need better police training. We need less militarization of police. We need police accountability. But these changes take time and they take specific planning. In the meantime, the city council needs to protect its people. That is your number-one priority. That is why I support a both-and approach and I support the mayor's veto.
Thank you, Robert. Next speaker is number 89, Lynn Hinckley. Lynn Hinckley, speaker number 89.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Hinckley, 40-year resident of the Padearne Park neighborhood, living only a few blocks from where George Floyd was murdered. The city budget is a tangible expression of the city's priorities and Minneapolis City Council has a chance to show the world that it is prepared to embrace the spirit of George Floyd Square with a budget centered on overcoming the city's white BIPOC wealth disparity. This BIPOC wealth building framework is expressed in the calculations submitted in my written comments. The success of every city program should be based on its ability to measurably overcome the city's racial wealth disparity. This is the essence of community building. Using those submitted calculations, I suggest the city needs to find 100 million to further its BIPOC wealth building programs primarily by enlarging its multiple housing programs. The city is not the only entity with resources needed to build racial wealth equality equity in our neighborhoods.
Thank you Lynn. Speaker number 90 is Joya Chomilo. Speaker number 90, Joya Chomilo.
Hi, my name is Joya Chomilo. I'm a renter living in Ward 10. Um, speaking in support of the people's budget and urge the city council to pass the people's budget's priorities. The city's leadership needs to prioritize people over profit through the allocation of resources to create permanent housing solutions that are high-quality and built with union labor. Especially during this pandemic, when we've seen the large-scale systemic failures of government at every level, we must protect our neighbors from eviction through fully-funded legal aid for renters and direct cash support from the city to the mutual aid networks that have been doing the work that our taxpayers should be doing. Instead, our tax dollars are being channeled to the state-sanctioned terrorist organization known as the MPD. The MPD is beyond reform. Council members, do the right thing and enact the people's budget priorities.
Thank you Joya. Speaker number 91 is Paul Kirk Davidoff. Speaker number 91.
I live in, uh, I live in Minneapolis and I want to encourage the council to pass the people's budget. Um, I'm calling Mayor Frye to not veto this budget. Um, and I want to thank you all for supporting the Safety For All budget. Uh, you know, I've, um, I haven't lived in a big city before, but seeing the, seeing the actions of the MPD after George Floyd have just showed, proved to me how, um, the MPD is an irredeemable white supremacist terrorist organization. They don't live here, uh, they don't care about us. They all live in the suburbs and they don't prevent any crime. All they do is escalate situations. Um, I'm, so, yeah, um, they need to be defunded and abolished.
Can you speak, can you state your name, please?
Uh, my name?
Yes.
Uh, Paul Kirk Davidoff.
Thank you so much. Speaker number 92 is Preston P. Speaker number 92, Preston P. The next speaker after that is Miguel Medina, then Jamie Hamburger, and Janata Petrus. Number 92, Preston P. Number 93, Miguel Medina. Speaker number 93, Miguel Medina. Speaker number 94, Jamie Hamburger. Speaker number 94, Jamie Hamburger. Speaker number 95, Janata Petrus. Speaker number 95, Janata Petrus. Speaker number 96, Fartoon Welly.
Hi, my name is Fartoon Welly. I live on Minneapolis and I work at Lake Street Building, uh, nonprofit. I also have, uh, over 18 years of public health and healthcare. Have seen the devastation of disparity of communities of color and indigenous people. Uh, the pandemic raged on. It's more important than ever to fund the city's program that supports the health of Minneapolis residents, including mental health, substance abuse, and overdose and environmental justice. Most critical of all is that we cannot, we cannot just talk about disparity on Black and Brown people and invest more police on the street because you, you're literally creating a recipe for disaster. And so we need the money to go into public health programs, invest in the community, helping them out of poverty and what makes...
Thank you Fartoon. Please, um, submit the complete comments via email. Next speaker, number 97, Joe Sell. Speaker number 97, Joe Sell. Speaker number 98, Sophie Gutierrez. Speaker number, yes. Is this Sophie?
Hello?
We can hear you.
Hi, this is Sophie. Um, I live in Ward 9. And I'm noting many of my neighbors in support of defunding MPD and adopting the people's budget. Um, I've been in multiple crises during this pandemic, but since MPD has murdered at least one person for every year that I've lived in Minneapolis, I avoid calling them at all costs. Every crisis I've been in, when the police have been in there, they've only escalated the situation. And MPD has had 150 years to reform itself out of being the violent racist oppressive institution on a fully-funded budget. I think it's way past time for the city council to stop spending a third of the entire city's budget on a literally murderous and unaccountable department. Um, please fund what we really need, especially in a pandemic, healthcare, housing, mental health care, um, the people's budget. Fund them like you mean it. Thank you for taking the first step with Safety For All budget. Uh, please protect it and please adopt the people's budget. Thank you.
Thank you Sophie. Speaker number 99 is Benjamin Miles.
Evening, um, my name is... Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Ben Miles. I'm a white Jewish male and I've lived in a bankrupt neighborhood for seven years. I, I fully support the people's budget. Since January 2019, my partner at the time called the police in a domestic manner we were having, soon the police arrived and I never even saw or spoke to them. The police did not give us what we needed. I needed to be held accountable for my actions, not in a punitive way, but in a healing way. Again, uh, the police did not give us what we needed. I needed to be held accountable for my actions, not in a punitive way, but in a healing way. The police are not able to do this. I'd like other professionals to respond to domestic disputes. Thank you.
Thank you Benjamin. Uh, speaker number 100 is Erin Rosenblum. Speaker number 100, Erin Rosenblum.
Uh, hi.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, my name is Erin Rosenblum and I've been a Ward 9 resident for the last 10 years. Like all of us, I want to save Minneapolis. The current strategy, which is right now a fully-funded MPD, has failed. George Floyd's tragic death put the spotlight on a pattern of behavior that too often treats citizens as enemies and the city as a battlefield. Moving $7 million into nonpolicing solutions is just scratching the surface of the change we need. I support the people's budget because I know our city is capable of doing better. Our current public safety issues come on the heels of massive economic disruption and closed schools. We don't need more cops. We need more jobs, more housing, more youth programs, and more resources for mental health. Thank you to all the organizers who paved the way for this discussion and thank you to the council members who have stood by your word. Thanks.
Thank you Erin. Speaker number 101 is Inzi Tanner.
I'm Jewish community action. I live in McKinley neighborhood in North Minneapolis. We support the people's budget. Part 1 and 2 of the Safety For All plans is the bare minimum we would expect from the city council. Most of my interaction with the Minneapolis Police Department occurred during my time living and working in South Minneapolis. As a social worker, I've witnessed firsthand the ways in which the Minneapolis police officers interact with clients. Oftentimes, the officer's behaviors and actions escalate instead of de-escalating the situation. I've also observed colleagues and other social workers de-escalate a volatile situation better than the police officers I've engaged with. As a Black trans man living in North Minneapolis, I believe our communities are most safe when we invest in our people. Our communities need more resources to be funded, not more police officers.
Thank you Inzi. Speaker number 102 is Caitlin Cook Isaacson. Speaker number 102, Caitlin Cook Isaacson.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Cook Isaacson and I am a white homeowner in Ward 9. Councilmember Kano, wow, the testimony that we've been hearing today has been fairly resoundingly in support of the people's budget, right? I have a story to share to encourage you to reject any veto that Mayor Frye might attempt. A few years ago, I encountered a neighbor experiencing a mental health crisis. He was hitting his own vehicle and yelling, but I stopped to talk with him. I don't have any special training, but as I listened to him, he calmed down. Um, unfortunately, um, a police officer had already been called and he arrived with his hand on his gun. Um, I intervened to request someone with mental health training be called to help my neighbor, but instead a second officer arrived to put my neighbor in a chokehold, allowing his face to smack on the ground as he lost consciousness. My neighbor was undocumented and ended up being deported. His family depended on his income and they ended up being evicted. I've since lost touch with them, but for them, let's create alternatives to police that they didn't have for their son. I support the people's budget and I expect you to listen to all of the constituents who do.
Thank you Caitlin. Next speaker is, um, 103, Carol Dines. Speaker number 103, Carol Dines. Speaker number 104, Chris Johnson. Speaker number 104, Chris Johnson. After that, Jono Kogil, Mickey Van Epps, Erin Hart. Speaker number 103, Carol Dines. Speaker number 104, Chris Johnson. Speaker number 104, Chris Johnson. Speaker number 105, Jono Kogil.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Uh, this is Jono Kogil. I am a Ward 6 resident. I'm also the president of the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board and I am calling, uh, in support of the council's budget generally and specifically the Safety For All Amendment, uh, because it moves us towards a new epistemology of safety.
105, Jono Kogil.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. Uh, this is Jono Kogil. I am a Ward 6 resident. I'm also the president of the Minneapolis Park and Recreation Board and I am calling, uh, in support of the council's budget generally and specifically the Safety For All Amendment, uh, because it moves us towards a new epistemology of safety, uh, which is so needed. We do not need to think of our fellow neighbors as criminals, um, or as bad guys and good guys. And this budget amendment moves us in that direction. It also aligns with NPRB's own reorientation of, uh, our Community Support Services Department to o-offer unarmed frontline community safety services in a more community-oriented manner, um, as well as our efforts to end the use of MPD in supporting events in our parks, um, moving forward. Uh, this dovetails well in our, uh, work, uh, to partner closely with the city, uh, and I hope...
Thank you, Jono. Uh, please send your comments and, uh, complete comments via email. Next speaker, number 106, Mickey Van Epps. Speaker number 106, Mickey Van Epps.
Hello?
Hi.
My name is Mickey Van Epps and I live in Ward 8. I'm speaking today to share my experience of a violent gang that is terrorizing my community. They are seen open-carrying and wearing collars. My neighbors do not feel safe driving or going to the store. Last Friday, a large group of these emboldened thugs came into my neighborhood, pulled a gun on a woman, violently assaulted a man trying to help her, and then kidnapped another. This happened steps away from where that same gang murdered George Floyd in broad daylight six months ago. This dangerous gang is none other than the Minneapolis Police Department. Understand that 12 police squads showed up within seconds for one person. Know that over 300 police responded to a peaceful protest last month. The problem is not a lack of funds or resources. It is the MPD itself. For these reasons, I support the people's budget. To my whole city, I urge you to invest our resources and our people, not the police. Thank you.
Thank you Mickey. Speaker 107 is Erin Hart. Speaker number 107, Erin Hart. Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Um, I wanted to speak against the current plan to cut the police force by 138 officers. Um, I'm completely appalled that this is being done without waiting for the staffing study to be completed. Um, one thing that I've heard repeated again and again is that more police does not reduce crime. I don't know what studies everyone is referencing when they say this. There are plenty of studies which say the opposite. Um, I have not heard this brought up much, but the Star Tribune did a poll of Minneapolis registered voters back in August. And reducing the police force is opposed by 44% of residents compared to 40% who support it. I want to note too that Black voters opposed cutting the police at a higher rate, 50%, compared with 35% who supported cutting it. Yes, we need reform so that police and police people like Derek Chauvin are held accountable for murdering someone, but more so that someone like him is removed long before it comes to him murdering someone.
Thank you so much, Erin. The next speaker is number 108, Diane Hofstadt. Speaker number 108, Diane Hofstadt. Next speaker is number 109, Katie Jones. Speaker number 109, Katie, Katie Jones. Are you there?
Hi, Council Vice President, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Katie Jones and I live in Ward 10. I would like to speak specifically to the incremental yet critical public safety investments proposed in this budget. As an engineer, I'm drawn to solutions that are pragmatic and durable. I'm heartened by the city seizing the opportunity to think about public safety differently. Change is hard and it's scary, but at the same time, it's clear that this one, the one-size-fits-all tool of law enforcement hasn't been working. As the saying goes, when you just have a hammer, every problem looks like a nail. I've built houses before and I know you can't get the whole job done with one tool. In reality, the needs of residents in the city are diverse and trust in our public safety system is damaged. By investing in violence prevention, life-affirming supports for mental health, and alternative responsive for non-emergency calls, the city is moving in the right direction to provide the right tool for the right issue, paving a path to build back trust. The time is now to act and this is a practical start. Please support the proposed public safety budget now and in the event of a veto. Thank you.
Thank you Katie. Speaker number 110 is Casey Rundquist.
Hello?
Yes, hello?
Hello?
Hi there, we can hear you. Hi there, we can hear you.
You can hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Good. My name is Casey Runquist. I'm a Ward 12 resident, but I'm speaking in support of the Safety For All Budget largely based on my job experience as a career public defender. I want to first thank Ms. Cook Isaacson. Sitting around, present, and not arresting, not sending people to jail, not prosecuting, but merely present is the only thing that we know works. There's plenty of money in the Minneapolis Police Department budget to do that. I know for a fact, based on my own experience, Minneapolis police spends vast resources.
Thank you, Casey. Please send your complete comments in via email. Speaker number 111 M. Millar. Speaker number 111 M. Millar. Then we'll hear from Matt. Yes.
Hello? Hey, I'm Speaker number 44 Isaac Spector. Can I hop in?
Speaker number 44 Isaac Spector. Yes, go ahead.
All right. My name's Isaac Spector. I've lived in Ward nine almost my entire life. Presently, I'm disappointed in the budget as it stands for next year, while the Safety For All changes are a baby step in the right direction, still represents an unsustainable incrementalism that is neither holistic nor realistic when it comes to addressing public safety. I feel continually disenchanted by the city councils. They turn their back on the constituents' vision, whether we're talking about the people's budget, the East Phillips Urban Farm, keeping public housing public, or co-creation with the Upper Harbor Terminal Project. The city council is shown a zealous commitment to water down neoliberal policy and cooperation rather than getting behind grassroots movements fighting for transformative change that directly confronts the white supremacist capitalist machine. The MPD supports this machine as a domestic terrorist organization that actively destabilized black, brown, and poor working-class communities. The city council is serious about addressing the harms of this toxic city department. They should prioritize the voices of those directly impacted by police violence and the legacy of racist infrastructure that has so effectively championed white supremacy in our city to this day.
Madam Vice President, you are muted. I'm sorry. I am unmuted now. The next speaker, I didn't mute myself. Someone muted me, but the next speaker is number 111 M. Millar.
Hey, this is Speaker number 45 David Guchy. Can I jump in?
Well, let's see if M. Millar is on the line. All right, Speaker number 45, please go ahead.
Hi, my name is David Guchy, and I am calling on behalf of the city's mutual aid project who acknowledge that we must do things for ourselves where governance fails and who believe in the power of community. We wholeheartedly support the people's budget, which values people over profit and rejects the surveillance and harm our neighbors experience. George Floyd was murdered not by individuals, but by a culture of racism and violence in policing. Police funding can and should be reallocated to do what your positions demand of you, keep the people of Minneapolis healthy. We believe that Mayor Frye willfully misunderstands what community members are asking for and what we are creating in the absence of city support. It is not for him to deny his constituents' needs, nor for him to outright reject an movement that is citywide. We do not ask that you care about us. We demand it.
Thank you. Speaker number 112 Matt Plummer. Speaker number 112 Matt Plummer. Speaker number 113 Michael Westerhouse. Speaker number 113 Michael Westerhouse.
Hello, my name is Mike Westerhouse. I'm a resident of Ward 12, and I support the people's budget. As a primary care physician, I have the privilege of working with immigrant and refugee families to teach me what makes people ill. Sickness comes from dehumanizing social forces, racism, racial capitalism, and the privatization and militarization of public services and life in general. I've also seen what creates wellness. People are well when they have living wage jobs, housing, food security, and ready access to healthcare. People are well when connected to neighbors and community organizations. People are well when they have spaces for cultural and artistic expression. To make us all safe, we must stop consenting with destructive and divisive systems that do tremendous harm to black, brown, and indigenous bodies. We must fund upstream solutions that prevent harm in the first place and create conditions for healing when harm does happen. Please take bold steps to build a reimagined future where everyone thrives. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Speaker number 114 Becky Smith.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, my name is Becky Smith, and I live in Ward nine. I am testifying on behalf of Violence Free Minnesota, the statewide coalition working to end relationship abuse. We represent over 25 organizations in Minneapolis who enhance public safety and support victim survivors and their families. We support the people's budget, and passing Safety For All is written. Following the murder of George Floyd, we sent a letter to the council and the mayor offering coalition and member program support and guidance. We received no response. We emailed the council mayor again on Monday, offering our expertise. We hope the council mayor incorporate our perspective as experts who work to end domestic violence and who realize after decades of working with and within the Minneapolis Police Department that victim survivors need and deserve more than one pathway to safety. We need the Minneapolis City Council to reallocate funds from the MPD into other programs and solutions to increase safety and stability in Minneapolis. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Becky. Number, speaker number 115 is Owen Ohan Bu.
Hello?
Hello? Is this Ohan?
Hello, my name is Juan Bu. I live in Ward nine, and I'm here in support of the people's budget and to not water down the Safety For All Plan. My parents escaped Vietnam in 1982, and it took them 10 years to be reunited with their three oldest kids. The trauma of separation and war has had a huge impact on my family, and as a result, my oldest sibling struggles with PTSD and substance abuse. We need to put people's health first. In the 90s, when my siblings and other Southeast Asian refugees came to Minnesota, they needed culturally specific mental health access. But what they got instead was a gang task force that racially profiled them and locked them up. This summer, my oldest sibling was living out of their car and had their home taken away from them. They were sleeping in the backseat after having some beers when a police officer woke them up. They told the police officer that they were homeless, had no intention to drive, and believed that if the keys were in the ignition and that they were in the backseat, everything was legal. But he gave them a DUI and towed away their home. Councilmembers, please keep your promise and invest in our communities and divest away from policing.
Thank you so much. Speaker number 116 Ashwath Narayan. Speaker number 116.
I'm Ashwath Narayan, and I'm the Executive Director of Our Streets Minneapolis, a nonprofit whose mission is to make the city a better place for those biking, walking, and rolling. Today, our native and black community members are much more likely to be hit by a car while walking and biking, a result of historical racism in transportation decision-making. We therefore support the $1 million proposed in the budget that will go towards the Vision Zero program that seeks to eliminate severe injuries and fatalities on our most dangerous streets and help mitigate these racial disparities. We are also alarmed by the mayor's proposed 2021 cuts to service levels that will keep sidewalks, protected bike lanes, and trails clear of snow and ice. These cuts will disproportionately affect folks who are already marginalized and are more likely to be people of color and people with disabilities. We also call for the removal of police from transportation because of its harm to black and brown people in our community. We therefore support the Safety For All Amendment in the proposed budget and oppose Mayor Frye's proposed veto. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Speaker number 117 Rena Curtis. Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Rena Curtis. I'm an eighth grader at Great River School, and I am encouraging the council to transfer funds from the MPD and give funds to other lifesaving organizations, such as mental health organizations, housing, and food security. Minneapolis Police Department is beyond reform, and the whole system is vaxxed and has been since its beginning. I am urging you to pass the people's budget. This is imperative to safety and health in the cities. Police abuse power and murder blacks, queer, and disabled people and get paid for it. Reform is not an option anymore. Vote for the people, not Mayor Frye. As a 14, housing is a stressor, and affordable housing is a need, not a want. I have also been around many police at protests and have been in their presence, and I know only a small amount of the fear and pain cops inflict on people of color every day. Please vote for the people and pass the people's budget. How do I stop? How do I meet my?
Thank you, Rena. Thank you so much. Speaker number 118 is Alex Burns.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Alex Burns. I'm a renter in Ward 10. I'm calling in support of the Safety For All Amendment and the people's budget. I think it's a critical first step, but it's long overdue, and a lot of work remains. I'm not satisfied with our annual $180 million investment in MPD. It's not working to keep people safe, and it's putting a lot of people in danger. To me, I think it's exciting to think about what becomes possible when we start moving these resources into other areas. We can truly keep people safe by meeting people's most basic needs and addressing the conditions that lead to violence. We could support workers. We could fund public housing. We could invest in climate action and decarbonize transportation in the city. These things are possible, and as much as some who hold wealth and power want to stir up fear, and we've heard that on this call, we can't lose sight of this vision. Please pass the budget as amended and keep going forward with urgency. And finally, I want to echo the thoughts and comments of Ash a couple callers ago. I agree with that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. The next speaker, number 119, is Ashley Oswald. Speaker number 119 Ashley Oswald. Speaker number 120 Tudor Stiharu. Speaker number 120 Tudor Stiharu. Speaker number 121 Justin Maluiki. Speaker number 121 Justin Maluiki. Speaker number 122 Jenny Floria. Speaker number 122 Jenny Floria.
Have you said Valentino or Vine?
Hello?
Have you said Valentino or Vine?
No, we have, I don't, I don't believe. Do you know what number you are?
No.
We can't see it. All it does is show the request.
What's your name?
Valentino McKenzie and Vine Adam. And Marlisha Smith.
So it's three people at one. Why don't you go ahead? We have not called those names before, but please go ahead with your testimony.
Sure, I can go first. My name is Valentino McKenzie. I am an organizer in the eighth ward. I am here in support of the people's budget and the Safety For All Plan. This is the bare minimum that we need for investment. I talk to people every day on the ground. I've never once heard what folks need is more police. That is not what keeps them safe. They can't call the police when they need housing. They can't call the police when they need a job. They can't call the police when they're dealing with mental health crises. They can barely call the police when they're dealing with drugs and addiction or to have to worry about going to jail. I'm calling on the council to stand firm on what they have said. I'm also here to shame the mayor for even threatening to veto what the people have passed. I want to applaud the council members that have stood firm with what the constituents have asked for. And really, Andrea Jenkins, you need to think about the things that are going on in Ward eight. The people here have come together. You have not been out here with us. We are keeping each other safe. We are keeping each other grounded, and we don't want the police.
Thank you. Please send in your comments via email. The next speaker then is number 123 Catherine Benny. Is this Catherine? Hello? The next speaker is number 124 Anita Demant. Speaker number 124 Anita, are you there?
I, I am Anita Demant. And I want to say that I disapprove the city council budget. All Minneapolis residents of all colors deserve to live in a city where they can live without fear of being assaulted by either the police or by other persons. Therefore, please do not reduce the police budget. It is irresponsible to defund the police. The police need to be retrained to walk in the neighborhoods that they patrol. They need to live in the city. They need lots of education not to respond with violence and guns right away. We also need to have a mental health response team. One that goes understands mental health issues and goes out to the people. We need to support more programs for vulnerable youth. Retrained to walk in the neighborhoods that they patrol. They need to live in the city. They need lots of education not to respond with violence and guns right away. We also need to have a mental health response team. One that goes understands mental health issues and goes out to the people. We need to support more programs for vulnerable youth.
Thank you, Anita. Please send in your complete comments via email. Speaker number 125 is Stacy Larson. Speaker number 125 Stacy Larson. Speaker number 126 Laura Norcas. Speaker number 126 Laura Norcas. Speaker number 127 Steven, hello?
This is Laura. Can I, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, great. Sorry about that. This is kind of complicated. All right, I'm calling actually in support of the mayor's budget. I live in Ward 10 in Uptown, and I have many friends in South Minneapolis, Phillips, Seward. I personally witnessed and heard many frightening details regarding recent thefts, shootings, muggings, carjackings, vandalism, drag racing, arson, and even terrorism from outside groups like the Boogaloo Boys, who all seem to have received a message that Minneapolis is underserved by effective policing. Rogue officers who do not respect Minneapolis residents or are a danger to the people they are supposed to be serving, especially people of color, need to be disciplined and/or charged for their overreaches or crimes. But cutting the police budget at a time when violent crime rates are going up and even Northside residents are suing the city because of inadequate policing seems tone deaf and irresponsible. I urge you to please support the mayor's budget, and I. I urge you to please support the mayor's budget and I really hope that rather than things that sound good on paper but aren't really well thought out plans, we need a real plan. We need
Thank you, Laura. The next speaker is speaker number 127, Steven Gerardo, followed by Thea Fredrickson and Michael Gozy. Speaker number 27, Steven Gerardo. Speaker number 128, Thea Fredrickson.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Thea Fredrickson and I'm a renter in the Lindale neighborhood in Ward eight. I'm happy that the council is committed to funding resources that truly keep us all safe by passing the Safety For All as written. This is the beginning of the change that our city demanded this summer after the murder of our neighbor George Floyd by the Minneapolis Police Department. It is also the bare minimum that I as a resident expect. I urge you to stand by the change that you committed to this summer by moving towards the adoption of the People's Budget. Real safety requires a profound change in how we run our city and distribute resources as well as a commitment to ending the rampant racism of the MPD. All community members deserve to have their basic needs met and this can be done by redistributing funds from the broken MPD to community focused initiatives. Pass Safety For All as written and move towards the adoption of the People's Budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Thea. Speaker number 129 is Michael Gozy.
This is Michael Gozy.
Hello? We can hear you.
I live in, I live in Ward nine. I'm the CEO of American Indian Community Development Corporation located in Ward the taking of the Police PEL program and the Community Response Team, both of which worked within our community, with our community. I ask you to complete the process that will be representative of all residents of Minneapolis. I ask Mayor Jacob Frye to use his own principles in making his decisions. This is not a time of a rush to judgment. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Speaker number 130 is Meg Walters. Then speaker number 131, Melanie Richards. And actor, speaker number 132, Beth Popaleski. I will turn the chair over to Councilmember Palmasano. Speaker number 130, Meg Walters. Speaker number 131, Melanie Richards. Speaker number 131, Melanie Richards.
Speaker 118, Matt Plummer. Hi, this is Matt Plummer, speaker 118.
Hi, Matt. Go ahead.
I'm a
Well, speaker number 118 was Alex Burns.
Oh, I'm sorry, 112. Yep. 112, Matt Plummer.
Go, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm a resident of Seward. I help run a local bookstore. I'm a board member of the Seward Neighborhood Group. In our neighborhood, our home has been burglarized, our store has been robbed, and I've had my car burglarized. We all agree we need to be safe in Minneapolis, but I know from long, long experience, the police largely do not prevent these crimes. Instead, the police kill, harm, and harass residents of Minneapolis, especially impacting folks of color and other marginalized populations. I call on the council to support the Safety For All proposal, pass the full People's Budget, and begin to defund the police. Decades of work has shown the police cannot be reformed. We must move to a vision of safety that does not include heavily armed militarized force who kill, harm, and harass our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I will now turn the chair over to Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I heard that you called on speaker number 131, Melanie Richards. Are you there? After that
I'm not Melanie Richards, but I just got onto the call and I, I don't, no, I wasn't given a, a name or a number and I'd just like to know what place in mind I'm going to be.
I, I'm not sure we're going to go on, all callers were given a number. I, I need to call them in order or listen for your name. Speaker number 132, Beth Popaleski.
Hi, my name is my name is Beth Popaleski and I live in Ward 10. We have a unique opportunity here. We can support the mayor's budget and reform the police and I expect my mayor and city council members to find creative ways to fund both initiatives. Let's quit with the divisive rhetoric and go for a win-win. I support Chief Aaron Dondo. He's our first police chief of color, a lifetime member of our community, and he has acted with nothing but integrity and courage during a time of crisis. I also support the movement to reform the police and I believe our chief is uniquely positioned to know the needed resources to achieve this and make the department accountable. I do not support defunding an already overstretched police force with no plan in place to deal with the disturbing uptick in crime. This has the potential for dangerous and unintended consequences. I join with the diverse voices of our city that have spoken in favor of a win-win solution. I support the mayor's budget. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker 133, Pedro Restrepo. Pedro?
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Hello? Yeah, good evening. My name is Dr. Pedro Restrepo. I am a 70-year-old immigrant. I have been in the US for 44 years, a citizen for 74, and a resident of Ward 11 for the last eight years. Since I became a US citizen, I have voted in every single election for the Democratic Party in the four states in which I have lived. I contacted by email my councilman, Jeremy Schroeder, about the police budget and did not even get an acknowledgement. Not very Minnesota nice, is it? I want to speak in support of Mayor Frye's budget. Defunding the police without a concrete plan is irresponsible. He recalled the GOP effort to kill Obamacare without a workable plan to replace it. My wife and I have been feeling increasingly nervous about the security situation in the city. In fact, defunding the police to fund mental services may become a self-fulfilling prophecy that we will need eventually. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are speaker 134, Tamara Kaiser, 135, Arianna Anderson, and 136, Anton Tripolsky. Tamara Kaiser, you'll have to press star six and wait for it to unmute. Speaker number 135, Arianna Anderson. Arianna Anderson, go ahead and press star six to unmute. Speaker number 136, Anton Tripolsky.
Good evening. My name is Anton Tripolsky. I am a renter and resident of Loring Park in Ward seven. I know that tonight we're largely focused on policing, but I'd like to briefly mention my concern about protecting my neighbors from evictions. Please support our neighbors. I support the Safety For All Amendment. Thank the council members and staff that worked on the proposal. I'll add that I feel and am perfectly safe living in this beautiful city this year and any other. However, I wish the proposal took more public safety funds out of the police department and into progressive community solutions. I regret that my council member Lisa Goodman and Mayor Frye serve rich people at the expense of the majority of their constituents and now frame their support of a failed system as a both and approach. I have called MPD three or four times, both to help myself and to help others, and neither I nor the people I called for were helped by their presence or the level of service the department provided. Any other department that fails so consistently and monstrously would have been defunded many years ago. The people, its council, and particularly council member Goodman and Mayor Frye should stop treating this police department and its police officers like the special snowflakes they put themselves
Thank you. Speaker number 137 is Ori Wasserberg. Speaker number 138 is Debbie Magnuson. And speaker number 139 is Catherine Nguyen. Speaker 137, Ori Wasserberg, are you, are you there?
Good evening. My, my name is Argana.
Oh, Arianna Anderson, 135. Yes, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Arianna. I'm calling with Renters United for Justice. I'm also a Minneapolis resident. I'm on my floor, one on the way. I'm aware that a large portion of the budget will be going into the police department. I think that it's important that we really focus on affordable housing right now, especially in the middle of a pandemic when people are losing their source of income. If we, if there's more affordable housing, homelessness will go down and the crime rate will go down. Therefore, we can avoid the need to over-police the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we had speaker number 137, Ori Wasserberg.
Hello, my name is Ori Wasserberg. I'm a resident of Ward nine. I'm calling today to ask you to pass the small step of the Safety For All proposal and take the extra step of passing the brilliant and powerful People's Budget. I'm a middle school worker and I'm faced daily with the realities of the severe shortage of truly, truly short of mental health and crisis resources. I've been in multiple situations with loved ones in mental health crises where the cops have been called and it has never resulted in those people feeling more cared for or supported, very much the opposite. Mayor Frye has shown time and time again that he doesn't care about the voices of those most impacted by the violence of Minneapolis Police Department. You all as city council members have the opportunity to push against that. I hope he doesn't, but if Mayor Frye has the Safety For All budget, I'm asking you all to override his veto and push forward the Safety For All proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker number 138, Debbie Magnuson. Debbie Magnuson. Speaker number 139, Catherine Nguyen. Catherine Nguyen. The next three speakers will be 140, Herschel Ausley, 141, James Riley, and 142, Jeremy Herschel? Speaker 140, Herschel? Speaker 141, James Riley? Speaker number 142, Jeremy Abs? The next three speakers will be speaker number 143, Bill Daning, 144, Alicia Ruder, and 145, Mark Bachman. Speaker 143, Bill Daning, are you there?
I'm here.
Go ahead.
Okay, we have an emergency. You've got around 80 murders, 500 shootings, carjackings up the wazoo. Public safety should be the number one concern. need more police. They need to do their job, get the bad guys off the street. Otherwise, this city becomes a no man's land. Now, this has to be done right at this meeting. You have to take action, munchkins, and I'm calling you that because you seem totally detached from reality. If you can't do it, you need to resign and then you'll have plenty of time, kiddies, to be off to see the wizard. Good luck finding them. I'm out of here.
Thank you. Speaker 144, Alicia Ruder.
Hi, it's Alicia Ruder from Ward 11.
Welcome, Alicia.
Please let the police chief do his, thank you. Please let the police chief do his job, give him the flexibility he needs. Do not cut overtime or lower future staffing levels. These are hard times and many in our community are suffering. Violent crime is on the rise across the city while officer levels are down. This is not fear mongering. These are just the facts. I'm deeply disappointed and saddened by city leadership. We see through those of you who are trying to take steps to defund and dismantle our police. Now is not the time for politics. Now is the time to support major reform and better public safety programs. You can do this without cutting the police budget. We should never advocate to abandon anyone in our community, including the police. We are tired of you dividing us and putting our safety at risk. Mayor Frye, I support your veto of this budget if the city council continues to undermine the police chief and endanger our lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 145, Mark Bachman. The following speakers after Mark will be 146, David Nowak, and 147, Lana Barch. Mark Bachman?
Hi, Councilwoman Palmasano, this is Debbie Magnuson, speaker number 138. Am I on the call?
Right. Thank you. Yep, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, I was having trouble getting on the call. I'm a resident of Ward 13 and I am calling in support of the mayor's budget. Listening this evening has really been an education for me and there's two themes that have emerged that it feels like so many of us want to punish the police in, in response to the George Floyd murder. That's a very clear and understandable thing. The other thing I'm hearing so clearly is the need for improved social services and those are very, very vital needs. And I'm calling in support of the mayor's budget because we need a both and solution to these problems. So I would encourage the city council to vote no for the People's Budget, no for the Safety For All budget because it doesn't really address the needs that we're speaking to this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Back to speaker 145, Mark Bachman. Mark Bachman?
This is James Riley, caller 141. Is it okay if I speak?
Yep, go ahead. We didn't hear you the first time.
Thank you. My name is James Riley. I'm a resident in Ward one. I would like to make a friendly amendment to the budget with the goal of bringing more unity back to the community of Minneapolis. Everyone who is listening right now, please write down this name and if you like the idea and would like the city council to support it in the 2021 budget after my comment, please email councilcomment@minneapolismn.gov stating your agreement. The name is Behavioral Change for the Safety For All Commission. I respectfully propose that the city council take an additional $1 million away from the proposed MPD budget and allocate this money to this new commission which will be composed of 70 members, one from each of the neighborhood organizations representing the 83 neighborhoods of Minneapolis, of Minneapolis and all its stakeholders. This volunteer commission in its first year will pan with all the residents of the neighborhoods of Minneapolis with a survey to identify changes to the behaviors of the MPD they would like to see.
Thank you. You are welcome to submit the rest of your comments to councilcomment@minneapolismn.gov. Back to speaker 145, Mark Bachman. Are you there? Mark Bachman. Speaker 146 is David Nowak. David Nowak. Welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is David Nowak. With my wife, Chris, and my two teenage sons in Ward 11. We came from downtown San Francisco to live here 21 years ago and as a family, we mourn the tragic death of George Floyd and recognize any forms of systemic racism in our nation. And I have great empathy and respect to the people who are victims of the bad behavior that exists in MPD and in support, in support of profound reform in our public services and increased budget for those services. And yet, I am a staunch supporter of the mayor's budget. A large percentage of us in all races and economic situations view ourselves as customers at MPD rather than victims and we need their services as well as other non-police services for public health and safety. Reduction in the police force is having profound effect in Tangle Town, including violent crimes right in front of our faces. By defunding MPD, you are trading one form of violence for another. We can't afford to have our police chief handcuffed. It is irresponsible to release a new product while pulling the plug on the old product without proper testing to ensure customers be cared for and we are those customers. So I support
Thank you. You are welcome to submit other comments to councilcomment@minneapolismn.gov. Speaker 147, Lana Barch. Are you there, Lana?
Yeah. Hello?
Welcome. Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Lana Barch. I've lived in Minneapolis my whole life and right now I live in Ward 11. I am here to ask that you give our police chief the freedom and flexibility so that he can do his job. I think it's premature. I think it's irresponsible to guess today what the size of this police force should be three to five years from now. Wait for the independent staffing study that you funded and is due next year. You have no plans for transitions, which is a recipe for disaster. We really need to get this right. It's so important. Police Police deter crime. We need more police, not fewer, to protect the residents and the businesses of this city. We know your arbitrary cap is a veiled ploy to defund, downsize, and abolish policing in our city. You're putting my safety and the safety of the whole community at further risk. Mayor Frye, I support your veto of this budget if the city council continues to handcuff the police chief and place all our lives in further danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 148 will be Eileen O'Byrne. 149 is Will Prest, and 150 is- Eleanor Terrell. 148 Eileen, are you there? Eileen O'Byrne? Obime actually, sorry. Speaker 149 Will Prest.
Hello, my name is Eileen O'Byrne.
Hi.
I've been a resident for 30- hi, I'm in Ward 11, resident for 38 years. I would ask that you restore the mayor's budget and give the police chief the flexibility he needs to run his department. At a minimum, eliminate the 750 officer cap. If the Safety for All budget is passed, I ask the mayor to veto it, and I will support him in that decision, and I support his ability to execute a veto. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 149 Will Prest. 149 Will Prest. Speaker number 150 Eleanor Terrell. Eleanor Terrell. The next three speakers in queue are Speaker 151 Gary Meyer, 152 James Bauer, and 153 Shane Moran. Gary Meyer, 151, are you there? Make sure to press star six and wait for your line to unmute. Speaker 152 James Bauer.
No, this is Gary Meyer, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Hi, go ahead.
My name is Gary Meyer. My name is Gary Meyer and I live in Ward 3, Niccolai on East Bank. I speak in opposition to the Safety for All budget because the reductions in police staffing levels that it contains put the city's recovery at risk as it emerges from the pandemic this spring and summer. Unless people feel safe enough to resume working, shopping, eating, staying overnight, and being entertained in downtown Minneapolis, the city will see decreases in parking fees, parking fines, sales tax, visitor taxes, property taxes, and business taxes that will necessitate a reduction in city services that overshadows any benefit, no matter how well intentioned that is produced by the Safety for All budget. The Safety for All budget is too vague, the amendment itself is too vague, and at best produces future results at the risk of critical short-term safety needs. I urge you to reject the Safety for All budget, and I encourage the mayor to veto it if it passes. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 152 is James Bauer. James Bauer. Speaker 153 Shane Moran. Shane Moran.
Hi, Council-
Hello?
Yes, my name is Shane Moran, I live in the Woodyer neighborhood. I wanted to speak in favor of the current budget containing the Safety for All plan in hopes that it is a first step toward the real change contained in the People's Budget. It's inexcusable to pass a budget that doesn't bring change to our public safety system, a system that has been advancing white supremacy since its inception. I hope one day we look back on this summer and see it as a turning point for how we approach public safety in this city and around the country. We can be leaders, but if that's going to happen, we need to take real action, and this is the first small step towards that action. Last, I just want to say that this is a ridiculous amount of attention put towards a small change to the police budget, our privilege is showing as we continue to ignore the dire need for more public housing and homes for our houseless neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are 154 Carolyn Brownlee, speaker number 155 Jeremy Graff, and 156 Mark Harrett. Carolyn Brownlee, are you there?
Hear me?
Yes, welcome, go ahead.
This is Carolyn Brownlee.
Yep, go ahead.
Can you-
Yes, we can hear you.
Um, my name's Carolyn Brownlee, I live in Ward 11. First of all, it's not privileged to want to live in safety, and that should be a right that is protected for all citizens of Minneapolis. I'm a lifelong resident of Minneapolis, my children are fourth-generation Minneapolitans, and we intend on continuing that multi-generational commitment to the city and urban living. With that said, urban living does not have to include astronomical levels of crime and living in constant fear. I ask that you give our police chief the freedom, flexibility, and funds to do his job. It is irresponsible to cap the force while we are in the midst of a pandemic and resulting exponential increases in crime and violence. We need the culture of the police department to change dramatically, and right now, we need more police to protect residents and businesses. You are putting our safety at serious risk. Mayor Frye, I support your veto of the budget if the city council insists on defying the police chief and putting our city in further danger. City council, please put aside your financial shell games and divisive rhetoric, specifically you Jeremy Schrader. Please put public safety as your top priority and keep the city a place where people live, want to live, and are safe, and will pay taxes to support-
Thank you. Our next speaker is 155 Jeremy Graff. Jeremy Graff? Make sure you press star six. Speaker number 156 is Mark Harrett. Mark Harrett? Our next three speakers are 157 Peter Schmidt, 158 Stephen Bantle, 159 Emeline O'Hara. Speaker 157 Peter Schmidt, are you there? Speaker number 157 Peter Schmidt. 158 Steve Bantle, are you there? Make sure to press star six. 159 Emeline O'Hara.
I'm here, can you hear me?
Now we can, go ahead with your name.
Uh, Steve Bantle. I'm the executive officer in charge of the Minneapolis Motor Police Unit, and I want to speak specifically about budget line item 14A.1B, which is the removal of $260,000 from contract service agreements in the motor police unit. These funds are used specifically for the care of the city's police horses and include boarding, veterinary care, and farrier services. Without these funds, the city will lose the motor police herd, and I want everyone to understand what that means. The Minneapolis Police Herd consists of 12 specially selected and highly trained horses. These horses on average annually attend 80 community events, complete 150 neighborhood patrols, and safely move over 100 crowds. The city's horses must be able to tolerate things that typical horses never encounter. The selection process is rigorous, the training is extensive, and very few horses are capable of functioning on a motor unit. The point I'm trying to make is that the city has a lot of time and money invested in this unique and highly-trained herd of horses, and if the motor police service contracts are eliminated, the city's irreplaceable police horses will- Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 159 will be Emeline O'Hara. 160 is Tony Proell, and 161 is Dan Geeson. 159 Emeline, are you there? Press star six. Speaker 159 Emeline O'Hara. Speaker 160 Tony Proell. Speaker 161 Dan Geeson. The following three speakers will be 162 Angel Dixon, 163 Alexis Collins, and 164 Christine Kelly. 162 Angel Dixon, are you there? Please press star six. Speaker 163 Alexis Collins. Speaker 164 Christine Kelly. The next three speakers are Speaker 165 Mary Lou-
Can you hear me? Oh, no.
Yes, go ahead and state your name. Yes, we can, Christine?
My name is Chris- Thank you. My name is Chris Kelly and I live in Ward 11. I'm here to ask that you give our police chief the freedom and flexibility to do his job. It is premature and irresponsible to guess today what the size of his police force should be three to five years from now. Wait for the independent staffing study that you funded and is due next year. You have no plans for transition, which is a recipe for disaster. Let's get this right, police deter crime. We need more police, not fewer, to protect residents and businesses. You are putting our city's safety at risk. I ask that you, as the city council, band together with your constituents and let criminals know that we will not stand for this level of crime in Minneapolis. Do we need reform? Yes, absolutely, but cutting the budget will not change their culture. It will only make it harder to invest in the training needed for change. Mayor Frye, I support your veto of this budget if the city council continues to handcuff our police chief and make all of our lives- or put all of our lives in further danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 165 is Mary Lou Wilm. Mary Lou Wilm, if you're there, press star six.
Hi, I'm 160, I'm Dan Geeson, can I-
Oh, yep, we'll go back to 161, go ahead Dan.
Thank you, I'm Dan Geeson, I live in the Diamond Lake neighborhood. Let's say that your kid owns a used car. It's not the most dependable car, but it gets them around mostly. It's critical for their getting to work, earning a living, and paying bills, but you think they should get something more reliable and have found a newer used car that's 10% less value but should meet their minimum requirement. Would you advise them to get rid of their current car and then go buy this newer car without test-driving it? Or should they test-drive the newer car to make sure it works properly and then get rid of the old one? Citizens of Minneapolis don't want to test-drive new public safety programs at the expense of our police department. They're the only option for providing safety and security in our neighborhoods right now. As a resident of Minneapolis, I would happily pay additional money to fund new trial public safety alternatives. I ask the council to approve the mayor's budget without changes. I ask Mayor Frye to veto the removal of funding from the police budget if necessary. I think it's highly irresponsible-
Thank you. You're welcome to submit the rest of your comments online. If we have anybody up to speaker number 165 Mary Lou Wilm? You can go ahead.
Is it Lou Williams, number 48?
You're number 48.
Can you hear me? This is Peter Schmidt, 157, can you hear me as well, or no?
Now we can, yes. Could we wait for speaker 48 and then we'll come back to you Peter?
Sorry about that.
That's great.
Yeah, good afternoon, good evening. This is Lee Williams, and I'm calling in support of the People's Budget. As a black gay person, I know firsthand how the police have evoked fear within my community. So therefore, I call for the increase in funding for affordable housing, funding for youth programs, and averting funding to alternative methods of police policing. Today marks a watershed moment for the police, to start the fall on the right side of history and to take a stand against their harmful relationship with its BIPOC indigenous constituents. So therefore, today, we the people, we're asking our city councils to divest from the blue robe terrorist organization known as NTD and toward those who actually need it the most, which is the people. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to speaker 157 Peter Schmidt. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, good evening, and my apologies to the previous speaker for interrupting them, I was just trying to get in. I am from Ward 10, and I am just briefly calling in to support the Safety for All Amendment in the People's Budget for three main reasons. One is it's bringing some accountability to this process. Though you can support Iridondo, you can also acknowledge that he's been pretty lackluster in his justification of the funding he's requesting. It also removes incentives for overtime for police, which though understandable in certain situations when a case is going, is incentivizing overtime right now, which is a terrible decision when dealing with any public safety or medical officer. Also, quite frankly, this is just trying something, even if it's a minor step, which is what you have to do to try to have any kind of change. Mayor Frye ran on a platform of progressivism and his budget polls very, very flat, so I encourage the city council to support the Safety for All Amendment. And to Mayor Frye if he's listening, a veto would be incredibly embarrassing for the city, though I'm sure the Star Tribune would love it and post some kind of unflattering picture of someone on the council or spot. So have a great evening, and please again, support this amendment. Thank you. Bye.
Speaker 165 Mary Lou Wilm, are you there? The next three speakers are Speaker 166 Leo Zabick, 167 Ashley Gold, and Speaker 168 Cheryl Hagan. Speaker 166 Leo Zabick, are you there? Go ahead and press star six. Speaker 167 Ashley Gold, go ahead and press star six.
Hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead, welcome.
Hello, this is 155 Jeremy Graff. Can you hear me?
I can, we can go ahead to you. I'm not sure who the other person was that just said something. So 155 Jeremy Graff, and then we're going to go back to 167.
Thank you, I apologize for missing that. Hey Jeremy Graff, Ward 11, I am in support of the mayor's budget and the police chief, and I've lived here 40 years, and it's not safe right now. And we have to get this lawlessness under control. Anything we want to accomplish as a city, whether it's reform of the police department or social services, it starts, we have to have a budget. And what's happening with lawlessness is we're going to drive companies out of downtown, we're going to drive businesses out of the city, and we're going to drive residents out of the city and visitors. So let's start by not defunding the police, get lawlessness under control, and then get to work on these very other important issues that we all agree on. Thanks.
Thank you. Back to 167 Ashley Gold, are you there?
Hear me?
Is this Ashley Gold?
I am here, can you hear me?
Now we can, welcome and go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Ashley Gold, I'm a resident in Ward 12, and I fully support the People's Budget, and I fully support defunding the Minneapolis Police Department. I work at the Anika Foundation doing community outreach for Hennepin County residents affected by the pandemic, and let me tell you, right now, people don't need police, people need resources. They need housing, they need help paying their rent, utilities, childcare, healthcare, and mental health support, and I don't see this getting any better in 2021. So I'm asking city council to adopt the People's Budget to divest the proposed $56 million from NPD and reallocate those funds to social programs and prevention. I don't have any power in this situation, all I have is my voice, but you, city council, you do. You have the power to come out against the mayor's veto. You have the power to get creative and reimagine public safety with all of us who support the People's Budget on this call. You have the power to create a legacy for future generations to come. So please adopt the People's Budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 168 Cheryl Hagan. Make sure you press star six.
I'm here.
Welcome, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Cheryl Hagan, I reside and run a small business in Ward 8. I'm concerned that the citizens and city council of Minneapolis would feel it's realistic to depend on the MPD for safety when they've shown time and time again how their bloated budgets and ego do not in fact prevent crime, yet tend to unnecessarily escalate sensitive situations and cause division within the community. A community that only 8% of officers actually reside in themselves, which means they take our tax dollars into funding other cities. I'm not so sure that MPD sees the humanity in its citizens, especially that black, brown, native neighbors, which is evident in what happened to George Floyd this year. Police themselves say they are wearing too many hats. It's time to reallocate funds to services that don't need armed officers. To start, I support the People's Budget, Part 1 and 2 of the Safety for All proposal, which is a step in the right direction. People over property. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Speaker 169 John Cunningham, Speaker 170 Richard Baer, and 171 Amy Beistrum-Mysik. Speaker 169-
This is John Cunningham.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
This is John, this is John Cunningham. I live in the central neighborhood, and I support the mayor's budget and the chief of police being allowed to do his job. I do not think defunding the police is a plan to address the problems of the police force. It sounds more like revenge. We are living with your defund the police, and there is more crime and more fear, and we are less safe than we've been. I support the mayor's budget and allowing the police chief to do his job. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 170 Richard Baer. Are you there? Press star six.
Hello?
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, go ahead.
This is Richard Baer, and I want to say that the, I think the city council is hypocritical. The city council approves a police union contract that allows bad officers to stay on. So let me repeat that. The city council approves the police-union contract that allows bad officers to stay on, so it's on you. Why are you blasting the police department? You could get that written out of the contract. And another thing, I drive in Minne, uh, North Minneapolis every day fixing buildings, and I see people, I see 20% of the people going through a red light. I see another 30% of the people speeding way over the speed limit with no enforcement. Let me say that again, there is no enforcement. So I want you to broadcast the next negotiation with the police contract, and I want to see how many of you council members support the part where, uh, the, uh, chief, chief of police can't get rid of.
Thank you. You're welcome to submit the rest of your comments online. The next speaker is Amy Beistrom-Masick. Are you there? Go ahead and press star six. Amy Beistrom-Masick. Go ahead.
My name is, yep, my name is Amy Beistrom-Masick, and I have lived in Ward 8 with my family since 2000. I support the people's budget. The city council's budget is a step in the right direction, but the people's budget will provide our city the footing needed to move away from a system in which employees of the city of Minneapolis are trained and given free rein to harass, brutalize, and murder black and brown people. Mayor Frye, council members, and the gentleman who shared the carbine analogy a few calls ago, if you can't envision what an immediate pivot to less police presence looks like, I urge you to visit George Floyd Square to humbly listen and learn. The people holding space at George Floyd Square have figured it out. The city can too. Black Lives Matter. Thank you.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Speaker 172, Robert Nichols, 173, Tim Keen, and 174, Jess Sundon. 172, Robert Nichols, if you're there, please press star six. Speaker 173, Tim Keen. Go ahead.
Hello?
Hello? Go ahead.
Uh, this is Tim Keen, uh, Ward 11. I wish I lived in a world where there were no senseless shootings, domestic abuse, home break-ins, carjackings, but we don't. The council holding this hearing tonight has a collective 98 years' experience as elected city council members. Where have you been? Is 2020 your first awareness that law enforcement in Minneapolis has problems? Demonizing and defunding law enforcement may make you feel good in the moment, but it does not solve the problems and issues of public safety in the 21st century. We're not going to reform the NPD with slogans and gimmicks. It requires hard work and time. Perhaps we start with hiring more officers with degrees in social work, psychology, the humanities, and incent our police officers to live in the city they serve. To our, my council member Schroeder, enough social experimentation with our city and get down to the hard work of governing.
Thank you. You're welcome to send in the rest of your comments online. Speaker 174, Jess Sundon. Press star six. Wait for your line to unmute. The next three speakers will be 175, Tony Arts, 176, Jana Friedrich, and 177, Sandra Samuels. Jess Sundon, are you there? Speaker 175, Tony Arts, are you there? Press star six. Go ahead.
Hello?
Hello, go ahead, please, with your name and.
This is Speaker 149. I missed my spot, so I could get in.
We'll go back to you, Will. Go ahead. Yep, go back and, going back to Will Prest.
Hi, this is Will Prest. I live in Ward 13. I'm a brand-new resident of Minneapolis, and I'm heavily invested in this city. I also am the chair and represent an outreach organization that operates in the summers in 22 parks and nine schools. All over Minneapolis, we help over 6,000 kids, and many of them are from the underserved community. I know we need reform, but safety really matters, especially for these kids and all these programs. Please give the police what they need. I want to thank my city council member, Linao Palmasano, for her balanced approach to public safety. I'm here to ask that you give our police chief the freedom and flexibility to do his job, to give him the staff and size of police force he needs. I don't want a cap. I really want safety for my family and myself. Thank you.
Thank you. Missing speaker number 70, 175, Tony Arts. We'll go to 176, Jana Friedrich. Is that you, Tony?
Yeah, it is, sorry.
Go ahead. Yep. Welcome.
My name is Arts. Uh, thank you. Thank you, council. I live in Audubon neighborhood, Ward 1. I just want to start to echo the many stories and experiences shared by community members stating why we need the people's budget. The council's Safety for All Plan is a good start in redirecting funds to services and programs that address deep holistic safety for communities, and thank you to the council members and staff for this work. Our communities need supported long-term programs that see to mental health responses, substance abuse, and violence prevention, and deep investments for our youth, housing, and healthcare. Police cannot address these issues. NPD has proven over years and years of leadership and reform initiatives that they have failed to protect our black, brown, and indigenous neighbors. How many millions of dollars have been spent on police misconduct? There was the ketamine administrations, the untested rape kits, racial profiling at traffic stops, harassment and abuse, and on and on. This is a pattern and a lack of accountability that has been well-established. And when George Floyd was murdered.
Five seconds.
In broad daylight from the community, even begin to imagine the Trump.
Thank you. You're welcome to submit the rest of your comments online. Tony? Speaker 176, Jana Friedrich, are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Thank you.
Go ahead. Yes, we can.
Okay. Okay, my name is Jana Friedrich, and I'm a resident of Ward 3. I want to thank the council tonight for taking these public comments and listening to your constituents. I support Mayor Frye's proposed 2021 budget. We are currently facing a public safety crisis in the city of Minneapolis. I urge the council to work in partnership, not against Chief Arredondo, by providing him the necessary funding to address the increase in violent crimes currently plaguing our city. The most basic responsibility of the city council is to provide a safe environment for your residents, and I would say that you're currently failing at that. Continuing to push for cuts to NPD with the current crime levels is completely irresponsible. I believe we need reform in other programs, but we cannot remove the safety net and put our residents' safety at risk in the meantime while exploring changes that will take significant time and effort to implement. I support Mayor Frye's budget and his veto powers as well, if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 177 is Sandra Samuels. Sandra Samuels, press star six. Our next three speakers will be 178, Elizabeth Salinek, 179, Abby Wolf.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Who?
This is, I got skipped. Okay. Okay, am I starting now?
I'm sorry. Somebody just said that they had gotten skipped. Could you tell me your number, please?
Uh, the number I had in the email was 500 or something, but you said my name, Jess Sundon.
Yes, you were 174 is what I had you as. Sandra, if it's all right with you, let's go to Jess, and then we'll go back to you. Go ahead, Jess Sundon.
Thank you. I am a resident of Ward 6 and also a member of the Twin Cities Coalition for Justice for Jamar. I support many of the cuts and reallocations in the Safety for All Budget with the addition of the cuts proposed in the people's budget. I have two further concerns. First, I oppose expanded funding for the OPCR, which is not true civilian oversight. It has one of the lowest sustained rates in the country for civilian complaints. This isn't because they're understaffed. It's because the OPCR complaint review process is not independent, and instead, police use the process to protect themselves from accountability. We need community control, and that's why I support Civilian Police Accountability Council proposed by TCC4J. Second, I oppose funding, more funding for the Minneapolis Violence Interrupters Program, which has had many negative experiences in the pilot program. On one occasion, they assisted police in the mass arrest of 50 protesters after the murderer Derek Chauvin was released on bail. On another occasion, they.
Thank you, Jess. You're welcome to submit the rest of your comments online. Sandra Samuels, go ahead, please.
Minneapolis is on a path to having the second most violent year since 1856, with over 500 people shot, largely black, 80 homicides, largely black, and except for Mr. Floyd, all killed by civilians. You would think that the people disproportionately impacted would have their voices disproportionately heard, but instead, we have heard one young white liberal person after another speaking for us. So as an African-American woman, I'll speak for myself and my neighbors. We want both ends. Do reform the department in partnership with the chief, not against him. Don't cut the chief's budget by $7 million and tie his hands when his force is already down 200 officers. Don't cap the number of officers, cutting his force by 138. Do make, don't make our African-American chief need to beg you for overtime at the height of violence. Do increase mental health and other violence prevention methods, but by using other money you know you have available to you. The Safety for All Budget will dismantle our, our police force and our city. Mayor, on behalf of black folks who want safety and reform, veto this budget.
Thank you. Speaker 178, Elizabeth Salinek, if you're there, press star six. Wait for your line to unmute. Elizabeth?
Uh, no, but number 35, can I get in the queue?
Sure. Could you give me your name, please? And then you have one minute to speak.
My name's Jen.
Yep, got it. Go ahead.
Right now? Okay. Um, hi, my name is Jen Jang. I'm a housing organizer for, I live in Ward 6, and I'm in support of the people's budget. I work directly with renters all over the city of Minneapolis, and let me be clear, police do not prevent crime. Access to food, healthcare, affordable housing prevents crime. Housing is health, housing is safety. If you care about the communities you serve, please consider reallocating funds towards programs like TOPA and Rent Control, not policing. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to our regular set of speaker numbers. 178, Elizabeth Salinek.
Could I, this is Carol Dines. Can I speak up? You called me earlier.
Yep, you were just a.
Policing. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to our regular set of speaker numbers. 178, Elizabeth Salinek.
Could I, this is Carol Dines. Can I speak up? You called me earlier.
Yep, you were just a few, couple dozen before. Yes, go ahead, Carol. Sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. In the past four years, I feel that this city council has done far more to divide the city than unite it, and the issue of public safety is one more example. When the city was reeling from the murder of George Floyd, still in shock and still processing what had happened, the nine people who voted to abolish the police squandered a great opportunity to bring us all together in dialogue with communities across the city about the next steps in reforming the police. There was an outpouring of support for reforming the police, deep reform, but nine of you took the most reactionary route by making your public pledge to abolish the police without consulting wider communities, without any plan, without details, and you escalated a wave of crime that has impacted everyone in the city. Part of leadership is communication and building consensus, and that is something the city council has never achieved. Instead of uniting the city and working with Mayor Frye and Chief Arredondo, your narrative of abolishing the police.
I'm sorry, the timer went off and we didn't get it onto the microphone, so.
Sorry about that. Carol, you're welcome to submit the rest of your comments to councilcomment@minneapolismn.gov. 178, Elizabeth Salinek, are you there?
Hello?
Hi, welcome.
Was that, was, did you hear what I had to say?
Is this Carol Dines?
Yes, it is.
Yes. Carol, we did, but we needed to remove you from the call because you went beyond your time, and we invited you to submit the rest of your comments online. Thank you. 178 is Elizabeth Salinek. Speaker 179 is Abby Wolf. Speaker 180 is Hillary Lovelace. The next three speakers in queue. Go ahead, Hillary.
Hi, this is Hillary Lovelace.
Hi, go ahead, Hillary. Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm a Powderhorn Park resident in Ward 9, and I'm hopeful to raise our child due this spring in a city without a murderous police department. I support defunding Minneapolis Police Department, and I support the Safety for All Budget, the first step towards transforming how we as a city invest in and define public safety. I wish the budget went further, but I'm glad we can begin to stop the bleeding and move towards justice. I admonish the mayor for threatening to veto a new vision for safety and any that support him in this effort. In the days following George's murder and the uprising, the neighbors in my block formed a text thread and connected about ways to ensure and envision our own safety because we knew we couldn't count on NPD. We split up hours of the night to watch the street for out-of-town arsonists and for youth who needed a safe place to stay. We began to educate ourselves on how not to repeat patterns of profiling and violence from police. Many of my neighbors and I are willing to change our lives to realize a new vision for safety, and similarly, I expect the services from our city to reflect a similar sacrifice and willingness to change. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next, we have 181, I believe, Kenneth Cron. Speaker number 181.
Hi, this is number 179.
Abby, welcome. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Hi, thanks for the time. My name is Abby Wolf. I'm a resident of Ward 9, and I'm calling in favor of reimagining public safety. I'm calling in support of the people's budget. I urge city council to pass at least Parts 1 and 2 of the Safety for All Proposal, shifting funding from police overtime to crucial items like mental health crisis response and violence prevention. Police currently respond to all kinds of calls they're not trained for, exacerbating and escalating things, and in many instances, making things worse, especially in their interactions with black, brown, and indigenous folks. Over six months ago, NPD officers lynched George Floyd in broad daylight, and Minneapolis became the epicenter of a global movement to reshape our notions of collective care and safety for all, not just property owners. Council members, the world is watching, and you have an opportunity to enact bold leadership by choosing to fund the basic needs of the people. We need resources in our communities to address systemic inequalities that drive violence and crime. Police reforms don't work when a bully like Bob Kroll is in.
Thank you. I invite you to submit the rest of your comments to councilcomment@minneapolismn.gov. The next three speakers in queue are Kenneth Cron, Jake Sullivan, and Jennifer Mink. Speaker 181, Kenneth Cron, are you on the line?
Yes, I am on the line.
Welcome, go ahead.
I support the, uh, the mayor's, uh, budget, and I do not support our council and their reactive, uh, approach to governing. They are complicit in the culture that we are experiencing in our police department. Uh, this council has caved in over and over to the Federation Union. The reason that we can't hold our police accountable is because this council has tied our hands by agreeing to contracts that do tie our hands. We need to decriminalize homelessness, drug addiction, and mental illness. We do need social services, but they should be funded separately, not by cutting the budget of the police department. Be accountable for once. Do your job. I yield my time.
Thank you. Speaker 182, Jake Sullivan. And after him, Speaker 183, Jennifer Mink. Jake, are you there? Press star six. Wait for your line to unmute. Hi, welcome, we can hear you.
Great. Uh, my name is Jake Badmired. I live in Ward, uh, 12. I wanted to voice my support for the people's budget, and I think we should house our homeless before allocating more money to the cops. And if I could, I'd like to, uh, stretch myself through song. (singing) All cops are bastards, baby. I yield my time. Drop the charges, I can fly when I am going down for this. I got some research on this, hell, someday, Philip. Thank you.
Speaker number 183, Jennifer Mink. Jennifer Mink, if you're on the line, go ahead.
Uh, the mounted unit being on chopping block with you guys. As long as, uh, there's crime and violence and criminals, you're gonna need police. And if you're gonna have police, you might as well use them effectively and efficiently. And especially in a city where already, where you're already short police, and one horse can do the same amount of work as 20 cops, is pretty amazing. The mounted police is your last proactive patrol, and they are highly visible, which helps deter crime. It also helps people find officers in their time of need. The true value of mounted lies within people's fascinations with the animals. There's nothing like a horse to draw people in for discussion and to be remembered. People don't really notice a squad car driving down the road. You don't think twice about it, you don't remember it. But that's the beauty of mounted police. When people see the horses and the officers, they remember. Um, I wanted you to, if you guys could take a minute and just ask yourself, if you guys were in the city coming up to a four-way intersection and you had, uh, horse tops-
Thank you. I would welcome you to submit the rest of your comments online. Speaker number 184 is Patricia Good, and after the speaker, I'll transition it to my colleague, Steve Fletcher, to run the next set of names. Speaker 184, Patricia Good, are you there?
Hello, I'm here.
Hi. Yep, welcome, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Great, thank you. My name is Patricia Good. I've lived in Ward 8 for 20 years. I support the People's Budget, and I support the Safety for All Plan as a first step. Thank you to the council members who voted for these amendments. Please pass Safety for All as written. I have witnessed MPD brutalizing people, treating them violently and utterly without respect. MPD funding and their power need to be significantly cut. We cannot tolerate the MPD gang terrorizing our city any longer. We will only have safety when we are truly caring for each other. We need to direct our resources from all levels, city, state, federal, and personal, to providing safe homes for all, clean water, nutritious food, quality education, and healthcare for everyone. We have the resources in this country to do this for everyone. That is what will bring us safety. The time is now to be the community we want. Thank you.
Thank you. As Councilmember Fletcher gets organized here, I'll call the next three names. Speaker 185 is Christopher Humphrey. 186 is Clifton Williams. And 187 is Molly Lacy. Christopher Humphrey, are you there? Press star six.
Hello, this is Christopher Humphrey. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, ma'am. My name is Officer Christopher Humphrey. I'm a tenured veteran of Minneapolis Mounted Police and the sole full-time mounted officer allocated to that unit. I believe you all should have received an email, uh, from me outlining the importance of mounted police, um, in such a way that meets all of our collective goals, uh, as well as an accompanying PowerPoint-
I think he doesn't have his camera on yet.
And an asset analysis. I believe that, um, this email and supporting documents and the fact that Mounted Police Unit is, is an absolute imperative unit in our city, um, as well as having mutual goals of both the council and the residents, is crucial, um, and that eliminating the Mounted Unit by eliminating our contractual budget will be a detriment that the city will suffer for some time forward. Uh, eliminating the Mounted Police Unit really makes little to no sense whatsoever from a community, resident, business, and budget perspective, and certainly not from a public safety perspective. In fact, the Mounted Police Unit is one of the most efficient and cost-effective resources.
Thank you, officer, and, uh, we did receive your email, and I'd encourage you to, uh, provide any additional, uh, feedback by email as well. Uh, next up is 186, Clifton Williams, followed by Molly Lacy and Amy Sizer. Clifton Williams, are you there? I'll call on 187, Molly Lacy. Hit star six to unmute. I'll call on Speaker 188, Amy Sizer.
Hello?
Hello, welcome.
Hello?
Hi.
Hi, my name is Amy-
Please introduce yourself and go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, my, my name is Amy Sizer. I am here speaking as president of the Minneapolis Mounted Police Foundation, and I am also a Minneapolis 911 dispatcher for 16 years. The Minneapolis Mounted Police are needed. One officer on horseback is equivalent to 10 on the ground. The added height and visibility allows officers to observe a wider area and be seen. It is an integral part of MPD, providing crowd control during large-scale events such as the Super Bowl, Final Four, and Aquitennial. The horses can move large crowds of people in a controlled manner and are frequently used during barcows and, more recently, civil unrest. The monocoque control can also go in areas where borderized vehicles cannot. This is essential during recovery missions of the North Side tornado in 2011. The Minneapolis Mounted Police are a significant bridge between building community and officer relationships. Police do not be the reason an important and historical unit in the city of Minneapolis ends. Remove this line item from your budget cuts. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I'll call next on caller 189, Matthew Emerson, followed by Casey Holmstrom, Carl McBurney, and Valerie Clemens.
Hey, this is Molly, 187, um-
Oh, hi, Molly, go ahead.
Oh, okay, thank you. Yes, this is Molly. I'm here with my partner Miranda Strong. We live in Long Island currently, but until recently, we lived at 38th and Chicago. And I'm calling to say that I support the People's Budget, and I'm very proud of City Council for making the implementation of mental health, um, response teams. Unfortunately, this summer, my partner Miranda, who is a black woman who lives with PTSD, um, suffered from a state of psychosis that lasted for several days, and I didn't consider it even an option at all to call the MPD, not only because we generally don't trust them, but especially after our experiences in the uprising, where we were peacefully protested and, and protesting and still maced and still tear-gassed. And I am supportive of the city council using ongoing funding to support the mental health response teams, not one-time pilot funding, which will not attract the right candidates. And shame on Jacob Frye for threatening to veto. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, Matthew Emerson is next, caller 189.
Members of the council, I am Matthew Emerson, and I work to reduce prison populations in the state of Minnesota. My organization has led to the freedom of over 700 men and women in a simple technical violations campaign, where we ask that people who get sent back to prison for simple things like jaywalking or owning a cellphone ends yesterday. We strongly support the People's Budget because it will forward not only our community, but our nation to a place of true racial equity and ending racialization. Incarceration in the state of Minnesota is being used to provide housing for people for reasons like addiction, mental health, and poverty. The Minneapolis Police Department has no view of social equity for the city of Minneapolis. The People's Budget is also a rebuke of a system that has led to the killing of innocent men, women, and children who are the Minnesotans. The Minneapolis Police Department has no vision. If I was charged with protecting 3 million people, or even three people, and I myself killed one, I would not have a job. I would be in prison as an entity, and I would not get more money to continue, continue doing what I've already done.
Thank you for your testimony. I'll call on caller 190, Casey Holmstrom. Hit star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Great. Um, hi, my name is Casey. I live in Whittier, and I believe in the People's Budget. Um, I think the Safety for All budget was a good start. Um, I think that, I work in public health, and I also work on the street with people experiencing homelessness, and I think there is a major need for, um, you know, figure out how we can make everyone safer. I think there is a, a lack of, you know, safety needs and safety care that we, I need to, to focus on and whatnot, but I think that and believe the People's Budget will do that for us. Um, and the bare minimum of the Safety for All budget. Thank you, and have a great night.
Thank you, Casey. Next up is caller 191, Carl McBurney.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
All right, I'm Carl McBurney. I'm from Ward 11. I've been here for four and a half years with my wife and kids. Uh, I support the council's proposal, and I am proud of the council for taking a stand both initially and then refining that stand later based on feedback and their work with the police department. I appreciate the work that you are doing here, and I look forward to seeing all of the future proposals that you will make, um, to help make our city better. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller 192, Valerie Clemens, followed by Daniel McConnell, Jim Nyland, and Misty Rinkenberger. Go ahead, Valerie. I'm not hearing Valerie, so I'll call on caller 193, Dan McConnell. Dan Mc- Dan McConnell, are you on the line?
Thank you, caller number, I keep getting muted, I'm sorry for that. Um, I just wanted to take a minute to do something completely different, uh, and talk about elevator inspections, and ask the council members to support Councilmember Gordon's, uh, amendment that's gonna be offered later tonight. Um, you know, we were, as a Ward 2 resident and longtime Minneapolis, uh, resident and a businessman of the building trade, we were told, uh, through the summer that, uh, we wouldn't be seeing layoffs in our bargaining unit. I was surprised to her, find out in the mayor's budget that that was not the case, that there was a proposal to eliminate all of the elevator inspectors, inspectors in the city. Uh, as we dug into these numbers, it became clear that that should not be part of the budget conversation. Elevator inspections brings in revenue to the city, and it's done so consistently for the last five-plus years. I'd also like to point out that in order to eliminate this service, the council should, uh, also repeal the ordinance requiring, uh, the city to provide elevator inspections, and there should be a public hearing on that action as well. Ask, uh, my ask is to, uh-
Yep, true.
Uh, thank, thank you, Dan. I'd encourage you to, uh, as I know you already have, uh, submit feedback by email as we proceed. Uh, it sounds like Valerie might have been on the line. Valerie, are you there? Valerie Clemens, are you on the line? Okay, I'll proceed then.
Can I, this is Valerie Clemens. Um, I was number 192, and I got remuted somehow. This thing keeps remuting me.
I can hear you now, go ahead.
So, super, thank you. Uh, like I said, I'm Valerie Clemens from Ward 2. Um, first, I want to express my disappointment at the council's inability to seize a near-universal desire to reform the police in a manner that unites us and doesn't divide us. Um, I do support Safety for All. I urge you to vote for it. I like that it will reduce calls to Minneapolis Police, which will help them stretch the resources of their budget. And it gives the chief access, and I know you've, you've made it possible for the chief to access a fund for overtime, um, if the situation warrants. Um, and that might be necessary until there's alternatives to traditional policing in place. I don't understand enough about the constraints the council is putting on the 2022 budget to restrict officers, um, so I can't say I support that yet. Um, on the, on the mounted police, I urge you to give the police department the option to retain that unit if they can find funding elsewhere and rearrange their budget, um, because I do agree that the mounted police is actually a really valuable, uh, resource. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, next is caller 194, Jim Nyland. After Jim, we'll have Misty Rinkenberger, Erin Sandsmark, and Jennifer Hedberg. Councilmember Nyland, are you there? Okay, we'll move on to caller 195, Misty Rinkenberger. We can hit star six to unmute.
Hello?
Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Misty Rinkenberger. I live in Whittier, and I'm an employee at the Museum Institute, Minneapolis Institute of Art. I'm asking the park board to postpone giving Mia their $18 million budget until they recognize the casuals joining OPIU Local Union 12. Casual employees at the museum are very diverse, and they work within the Art in the Park, Third Thursday, Family Day, and many of the other community outreach, outreach programs. Most of these employees make less than $15 an hour. Please use your power and voice to encourage Mia and Director Dr. Katie Luber to support these diverse and marginalized employees with the union. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, next up is 196, Erin Sandsmark. I'm not hearing Erin, so I'll call on caller 197, Jennifer Hedberg. Hit star six to unmute.
Hi, um, can you hear me?
I can, welcome.
Great. Hi, my name is Jennifer Shay Hedberg. I am a 30-year resident of Minneapolis. I live in Ward 13, and I am testifying in support of the budget as submitted by the mayor and in opposition to any alternative proposal that seeks to remove requested funding for the police department. The police chief has represented that the requested funding in the submitted budget is necessary to adequately address the situation, and no evidence has been raised on which to challenge the chief's representations. The council should trust the chief, not seek to limit his freedom, nor divert the necessary funding for his department in order to fund new public safety alternatives. Both current safety and future changes to policy can be accomplished if you engage in good governance and not be swayed by public passion. In short, police deter crime. We need more well-trained police, not fewer, to protect residents and businesses. Thanks so much.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, next up is caller 198, Sirius Marie, followed by 199, Tom Hedberg. I'm not hearing Sirius, so I'll call on 199, Tom Hedberg. Hit star six to unmute.
I missed my spot.
Uh, hi, who is this?
95. Janita.
Okay. Um, please go ahead with your testimony.
My name is Janata Petrusnasa, and I live in the central neighborhood, four blocks away from Cut Foods and where George Floyd was murdered. And I have experienced the police, you know, growing up and in my schools and in my community, and I just imagine that there could be something so much more healing and transformative in our community than the police. Um, and I've had good interactions with police, you know, um, but I've also known people who've been murdered by police and have been stopped, one individual friend of mine, 60 times by police. The anxiety and stress of living in a policed state is not what I feel young people or any future generation, um, deserves. I think we could have community members who are paid to love on and support and heal and give people what they need. Um, in the experience of George Floyd, he needed someone to show up and give him groceries, give him money, and not-
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, that brings us back to 198, Sirius Marie. I'll call now on 199, Tom Hedberg. Tom will be followed by Kathleen McCormick, uh, Rose Stengel, and Julianne Brunzel. Tom, if you're there, hit star six. Tom, if you're there, hit star six. Caller 200 Kathleen McCormick. Hit star six to unmute.
This is Kathleen McCormick.
Welcome.
Hello, this is Kathleen McCormick. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, please proceed.
Okay. I am a 35-year resident in Ward 11 and I operate a in-home childcare. I've been licensed for over 30 years. I want to see the city respond to the needed changes within the police chief's department and have him have the power to replace, retrain, and hire the needed police staffing that our city deserves. The presence of police in all the neighborhoods of the city is very low. And the response, of course, to this summer's tragedy and the history of some of the aggressive moves in an attempt to create
Thank you for your testimony. If you do get cut off, you can submit your comments to us via email and I encourage you to do so. Next is Rose Stengel, followed by Julianne Brunzel and Shandra Hock. Go ahead, Rose. Caller 201. Caller 202 Julianne Brunzel. Hit star six to unmute.
Hello, can you hear me? Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Hi, my name is Julianne Brunzel. I'm a lifelong resident of Minneapolis and live in the 11th Ward. By way of background, I am a retired police officer of 33 years, retiring as special agent with the Minnesota BCA and was the second woman in Minnesota to work patrol. Ironically, I am a strong liberal who found myself working within a very conservative and at times hostile environment. It is obvious that policing is in dire need of reform. As a start, fill the rank and file with 50% women and people of color. Cutting the budget is not up the answer, however. Therefore, I am in support of the mayor's budget. My fear with the defunding measures is that the remaining sworn officers will become 911 order takers, adventure seekers, and more militarized. Policing is a social service agency, folks. It is the only public service that makes house calls on demand 24/7, 365. This alone provides the community with a sense of security and safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Caller 203 Shandra Hock.
Shandra Hock.
We can hear you, go ahead, please.
My name is Shandra Hock. I'm in full support of the People's Budget and Safety for All proposal. My mother lives near Lake Portland in Ward 9, near where I grew up attending elementary school. I do not trust the police, nor have I ever felt safe around the police. That means we're doing something wrong. I worked with people without homes at Hennepin County. When I was working there, police were handling calls that someone with expertise in mental health prices or someone with housing resources should have dealt with. People do not need police. We need additional funding in education, infectious disease prevention, affordable housing, mental health support, all which would get at the root of the problem in preventing violence and crime. The funding for the MPD is 193 compared to the Health Department, which is 24. Only a third, 66 million, is being demanded to be divested. I'm insulted by the mayor's veto where, during a pandemic where healthcare providers do not have a proper protective equipment. For Mayor Frye and anyone else supporting the mayor's veto, I'm calling you
Thank you for your testimony. Next is Carissa Hurtel, followed by Bill O'Brien, John Barch, and Sophia Reuter. Number 204 Carissa Hurtel, please go ahead. Carissa, you can hit star six to unmute. I'll call on caller 205 Bill O'Brien.
Yes, my name is Bill O'Brien and I live in Ward 11. I'm here to ask that you give our police chief the freedom and flexibility to do his job. Police deter crime and I want to emphasize, we need inspired individuals as our police to protect residents and businesses. There is complete agreement, the internal culture of our police is unacceptable, but as citizens, we must remember the adversarial culture within the Minneapolis Police Department has been permitted to flourish with the consent of the city council. You all have protected this culture rather than address it. As evidence, I'd like to point out that my own councilman Schroeder advocated to me within an email for his yes vote last week by telling me he voted with the majority of the city council. This demonstrated to me a complete lack of critical thinking and instead illustrated the herd mentality that permeates the city council and exemplifies a bureaucratic organization. You're all putting the safety of my family and my neighbors
Thank you for your testimony. You can submit the remainder of your comments online if you had more to say. Caller 206 is John Barch.
My name is John Barch. I reside in the 11th Ward. I'm 70 years old and I've lived in Minneapolis my entire life. I am retired. I like to go to walks in the city. I am in support of the mayor's budget. I think it is premature and irresponsible for you to guess what the size of the police force should be in three to five years. Why aren't you waiting for independent staffing study that you funded and is due next year? I ask you to let the police chief do his job. Mayor Frye, I support your veto of this budget. If the city council continues to handcuff our police chief and in so doing puts my family and the citizens of Minneapolis in danger. We need more police, not fewer police. Yes, we need police reform. We can do both. There is no doubt in my mind that those of you on the city council who pushed the slogan and the plan to defund the police are somewhat responsible for increase in crime we see today. I would like to know when will it be safe for me to go on walks again?
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller 207 Sophia Reuter, followed by Jory Cosell, Sheri Seifert, and April Christensen. Hi Sophia, go ahead.
Hi, Sophia Reuter, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I'm 14, I'm in eighth grade. I'm 14 in eighth grade, ninth, 10, Minneapolis Public Schools. I've lived in Minneapolis my whole life and it is a place that I care about and I really want to see succeed. The recent events such as the murder of George Floyd and the carjacking with shots fired right outside of my house has made me feel very unsafe. I feel like defunding the police has become a trend on social media that not everybody understands. While I do not think defunding the police is the right answer, the police system is in serious and desperate need of reform. I think the mayor and the council members need to find a way to collaborate so everyone in Minneapolis community can feel safe and protected. As Michelle Obama said, when they go low, we go high. Come on Minneapolis, we can do it.
Thank you for your testimony. Caller 208 Jory Cosell.
Hi, my name is Jory Cosell. I live in Ward 10. I also work at a small business located on Nicolette in Ward 10. I'm going to say that the People's Budget and Safety for All are necessary first steps towards true public safety reform. The city of Minneapolis showed up by the thousands this summer to demand swift and drastic change in our approach to public safety. And the people of the city are calling for reallocation of funds and redistribution of power and resources, primarily against and away from the MPD and the union they're protected by. For Mayor Frye to upend a multi-billion dollar budget, over $7 million in MPD funding is an unforgettable disappointment. We don't need more armed officers, we need safety and resources for our most vulnerable neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller 209 Sheri Seifert, followed by April Christensen and Richard Reuter Sr. Go ahead Sheri.
Hello, you hear me?
I can hear you, please proceed.
My name is Sheri Seifert and I'm a middle-aged white woman and a homeowner living in Ward 12. In the past, I have had good interactions with the MPD. 13 years ago, when I was mugged at gunpoint, I didn't hesitate to call the police who treated me respectfully. Since then, I learned that my experience was very different than my friends with darker skin. I belong to Calvary Lutheran Church, one block from where George Floyd was callously murdered by Minneapolis Police. I spend time in George Floyd Square where we stand firm in calling for justice, my faith the band says. Last Friday, a cop pursued a carjacking suspect on foot into George Floyd Square and immediately 12-plus police cars and 20 heavily armed cops appeared. The handcuffed suspect had their head and body slammed on the back of a car. A young woman who tried to intervene had a gun pulled on her. This could easily ended in another senseless death. These actions were traumatizing. And this reign of terror needs to stop. We can do better.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller 210 April Christensen.
Hello.
Hi, please proceed with your testimony.
Am I
I could hear you briefly, are you still there?
Okay.
I can hear you, yes.
My name is April Christensen and I have lived in Ward 11 for 20 years. I have never seen or experienced such a surge of crime in my neighborhood like this year. I've seen attempted robbery and losing my bike, which is very scary. I believe police is needed to deter crime for all of Minnesota, but we also need social transformation and planning for the future and training new recruits. The current safety plan does not include enough planning or implementation for safe policing. This is why I think voting for mayor's police budget is so important to me now. We need to support Chief Aaron Donos so he can have the freedom and flexibility to do his job. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is 211 Richard Reuter Sr., followed by Nicholas Barch, Zara Kurt, and Jake Seifert.
Are you there?
We are here, we can hear you, thank you.
My name is Richard Reuter Sr. I live in Ward 11 and have lived here since 1970. I raised a family in Ward 11 and for 40 years I ran a very successful business in Minneapolis. And now I am retired in Ward 11. I am fully committed to this city. I ask that you give the mayor and the police chief the freedom and flexibility to do their jobs and support the mayor's budget. We need to support the safety of our businesses and our citizens first and foremost. We should not defund the police. Mayor Frye, if that does not happen, I then would definitely support your veto of this budget. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is Nicholas Barch. Welcome Nicholas. You can hit star six to unmute.
My name is Hopefully you can hear me now. My name is Nicholas Barch. I reside currently in Ward 4. I have been living in Minneapolis my whole life for 33 years, originally resided in Ward 11, now happily live in Ward 4. I am just calling to express and plead to allow the police chief and our mayor the flexibility and ability to do their job. Couple of reasons why I believe police is important in this city and why we should continue to try to fund it, not defund it. One of the reasons is my experience working human services and mental health. Numerous times I've utilized the police officers to help me in a lot of situations. Wow, like a lot of people have pointed out, they're highly untrained in mental health situations, but yet helped out a lot in those type of situations. One last thing I want to point out too, that we really need to try to get away from the rhetoric of using abolishment and elimination. A really highly intelligent speaker early on, 209 stated about social media and how these things get moved. When we say abolish and elimination, it gives a license to kill to teenagers to just go out and be lawless and do whatever they want to do and that it totally
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, the time has expired for this speaker. We missed the beaver, I'm sorry again.
Okay, thank you Mr. Clark. And thank you Mr. Barch for your testimony. If you had more to say, I would encourage you to email your council member directly. Number 213 Zara Kurt is next, followed by Jake Seifert and Meredith Jurek. Go ahead Zara.
Hello?
Hi, welcome. Please proceed with your testimony.
Oh, so excuse me, so I'm actually number 199. I was stuck in the lobby for music. Tom Hedberg, can I speak now or should I
Yes, Tom, go ahead, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name's Tom Hedberg. Over the past three decades, I've lived in Minneapolis, run small businesses in Wards 3, 10, and 13. I'm calling in support of the budget as submitted by the mayor and against any alternative proposal that seeks to reduce requested funding for the police department. Good governance keeps itself grounded in facts and makes decisions to address those facts versus public passion. The city currently has a police staffing challenge exacerbated by the significant ongoing rise in crime as well as some public attitudes. The police chief has indicated the funding in the submitted budget is necessary. I've not seen the facts to challenge the chief's representations. Both current safety along with future improvements in public safety can be accomplished with wise, informed governance rather than marketing-style slogans. Restricting the police chief at this time is extremely reckless and will put the safety of the people at risk. Minneapolis is at an important crossroads. Let's get this right. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. That brings us back to caller 213 Zara Kurt. I'm not hearing Zara, so I'll call on caller 214 Jake Seifert. Go ahead Jake, you can hit star six to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jake Seifert from Ward 8. I felt compelled to call in tonight because folks such as the chief, mayor, members of the council, and apparently a lot of folks from Ward 11 have been manipulating my experience to fit their own agenda. In early November, when my car was broken into, a window was shattered and a backpack was stolen. It was a major inconvenience and definitely scary, but the more I thought about it, there was virtually nothing that the police could have done to stop this incident from occurring. The point is, police do not prevent crime. The chief himself has admitted that there is no magic number of officers that will stop all so-called crimes. We need to stop funneling money into a broken department that employs violent outside agitators to openly despise, harass, and murder our residents. We need a system in place to make it so that people don't feel like their only option to survive is to break into cars. I support People's Budget and at the very least, the council needs to approve the Safety for All Amendment. Mayor Frye needs to come to terms with the fact that the cops and the Star Tribune will never respect him, so he might as well do something for his residents for a change. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Seifert. Caller 215 Meredith Jurek, followed by Stephanie Shimoda and 217 John Wheaton. Go ahead Meredith. Caller 216 Stephanie Shimoda, you can hit star six to unmute.
Hello. Hello.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Shimoda. I live in Whittier in Ward 10 and I am a member of Isaiah. I'm excited to see the Safety for All budget plan passed as a first step to building a better public safety system and I hope to see the People's Budget pass in the future. Shifting public safety responsibilities like mental health, addiction, and homelessness to other parts of the city seems much more appropriate than current strategies being used to deal with said issues. Public safety is more than policing. I ask the council to pass the budget as amended and urge the mayor to withdraw his threat of a veto. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller 217 John Wheaton.
Hello, my name is John Wheaton, Executive Director.
Executive Director of a nonprofit youth development organization that has served thousands of underserved youths and families in Minneapolis over many decades. I also serve on the board of another longtime youth development organization in North Minneapolis. We clearly need a new approach to public safety, but doing it right requires good judgment and planning and it should all be based on thorough studies and proven methods. A regular police presence is a deterrent to crime and dramatically reducing the number of officers in our community is the wrong approach at this time. The recent rise in violent crime speaks for itself and the insecurity so many residents are now feeling is palpable, especially in communities of color, as Sandra Samuels just so eloquently shared. I urge this council to pass Mayor Frye's budget and give Chief Arredondo what he needs to keep our community as safe as possible until proven and effective alternatives can be implemented. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller 218, Lucia Melling. Lucia will be followed by 219, Dave Ellering, and 220, Minister Dr. Ora Hoakes. Go ahead, Ms. Melling. I'm not hearing Lucia Melling, so I'll call on caller 219, Dave Ellering. You can hit star six to unmute.
My name is Dave Ellering. I live in Ward 10. I strongly believe that our current system needs to change, but this cannot be rushed. People's lives literally depend on these decisions, so they need to be educated and based on facts. And the data does not lie. Police deter crime. Do police eliminate all crime? Of course not. But crime will continue to skyrocket as police presence is further decreased. Minneapolis is currently unsafe for all people, regardless of color, and it's unacceptable. What happened to George Floyd is disgusting, but decisions based solely on emotion and good intentions without strategic planning are harmful to us all. City council members, you owe it to yourselves, the people of this city, and the memory of George Floyd to base your decisions on facts, data, and studies so that the changes can be effective, long-lasting, and truly keep everyone in Minneapolis safe. Mayor Frye, I support your veto of this budget if the city council continues to try to force it upon Minneapolis and place all of our lives in further danger. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller 220, Minister Dr. Ora Hoakes. Welcome. Minister Hoakes will be followed by Mary Castorf, Michelle Hord, and Holly Morale. I'll call on caller 221, Mary Castorf. You can hit star six to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, I remain opposed to the Safety for All plan. I'm in favor of major reform of the MPD but not defunding it. I support the mayor's budget. I want the MPD funded to remain as recommended by the mayor and chief. I want the co-responder program and other proven preventive programs expanded. I do not want new programs that have been untested or unproven, fully funded, unless they are piloted first. I don't want any MPD staffing reductions made until the results of the staffing study are available, which won't be till later next year. I want logical and rational decision-making. I do not want decisions based on inexperience and emotion. If the Safety for All plan is approved by the council, I am supporting the mayor's veto of the plan. Our crime is out of control. This is not the time to make major changes that are not well thought out. Preventive programs are great, but they take years for results, and we do not have that...
Thank you for your testimony. And you can submit further comments via email. Next is caller 222, Michelle Hord.
Hi, gentlemen, thank you. This is Dr. Ora Hoakes.
Oh, I'm sorry. We missed Minister Dr. Ora Hoakes. So we'll go back to caller 220 and then I'll get right back to you, caller 222. Please go ahead.
This is Dr. Ora Hoakes.
Welcome.
Thank you. I am a resident of Ward 5 and I'm a community elder and I'm also of African descent. And I support the chief and his ability to be flexible in staffing. I believe that you need to wait for the results in the staffing study to cut the ties with the Federation. And I believe that our chief can do the job if you do not tie his hands. And for those who are of non-African descent, you cannot speak for our community. We do need policing in our community. We can also have the mental health services with this budget. And I thank you, Mayor Frye, for your diligence and courage. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller number 222, Michelle Hord.
Thank you. I'm troubled by the false ideology that continued budget cuts to the police budget makes everybody safer. This either-or ideology has us in this crime-infested mess. The reality is, we need an increase in the police force. We need bike patrols, mountain patrols, foot patrols. We need more police getting to know and interacting with the people in our communities. The way to build safer communities through a police force is through a police force that is fully staffed, continually trained to diversity, community outreach, and de-escalation. We need a fully funded budget to do this. We have to be more progressive in our plans before pushing to slash budgets and personnel in a punitive manner. Let's support our police chief's plan of a newly created public safety department. I support Mayor Frye's budget. And also, please quit using the word "privilege" to shame people for wanting to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller 223, Holly Morale. Holly will be followed by Lee Samuelson, Catherine Schmidt, and Chris Rosine. You can hit star six to unmute. I'll call on caller 224, Lee Samuelson.
Hello, Lee Samuelson, Ward 12. I generally support the people's and the amended budget as long as any of the first hired, first-fired aspects of a police contract do not result in newer officers with less racial bias taking the loss, if such a distinction exists. I was pleased to see the rebuild resilient budget amendment. Investments in energy-efficient and resilient reconstruction must remain a priority because of the long-term benefits of building back better. Let's mobilize a response to the climate emergency, which you declared, in ways that reduce energy cost burdens while expanding good-paying jobs and energy efficiency in solar. I'd like to ask that the 0.5% franchise fee increase revenue be used solely for that above-intended purpose and to have some transparency in how those funds are being allocated going forward. And I'd also like to see the city council support the East Phillips Indoor Urban Farm Project as it can help many small businesses owned by people of color.
Thank you for your testimony, Lee. Next up is caller 225, Catherine Schmidt.
Hi. Hi, I'm Catherine, homeowner in Ward 8, Bryant neighborhood. I 100% oppose the proposed people's budget and slashing the MPD budget and dutifully support the Minneapolis Police Department and the mayor's proposed budget. I support Mayor Frye and Chief Arredondo with their support in expanding the police force with new recruitment classes and advanced training for current officers. I also support the CPS teams, who are essential liaisons to the community and partnering with Minneapolis Police Precincts. If we cannot work with the current chief, we need to look outside for a new chief that we'll be able to work with. I think it's irresponsible and arrogant for us to think that a city can survive without adequate policing, as noted by the current rising crime and crime rates. Mayor Frye, if you're listening, I support you in vetoing this plan. Thank you for your time.
And thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller 226, Chris Rosine, followed by Catherine Shreves and Kristen McGrath. Go ahead, Chris Rosine.
Hello, sir. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Go ahead.
I appreciate the city council. It's time to redeem yourself. Every born and raised self Minneapolis, Lake and Lyndale, what happened the night of the riot and the city council declaring, calling for dismantling and defunding the police, that kind of rhetoric was so irresponsible. Please clean up your act. Can't say a lot in a minute. We let the worst violent criminals, we're playing patty cake with them. They need to be made examples of. We should have no nonviolent people in jail or arrested or harmed financially through the legal system. Meaning, why haven't we decriminalized, not necessarily for recreational, marijuana, things that bring police into contact with law-abiding, nonviolent citizens? You get tough on the worst crimes. They're predators. We know it. You don't let them... Sexual child predators.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is 227, Catherine Shreves. You can hit star six to unmute.
Hello?
Can you hear me? Hello?
Hi, is this Catherine Shreves?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Please proceed with your testimony.
Oh, sorry. I'm Catherine Shreves. I've lived in the 13th ward for over 30 years. I support the mayor's budget and I'm asking the council to approve the mayor's budget and give the police chief flexibility to run the police department without micromanaging him. I want to see reform of the police too. And like people all over the world, I was horrified by George Floyd's murder by the police. So I'm asking the city council to work immediately on reforming the police contract that allows bad police to stay on the force. Get rid of provisions like past practices and just cause. We should be replacing these bad cops with better cops, not defunding the police. And I do think we need improved social services, co-responder programs, and mental health services, but I don't think these need to be funded by cutting the police department. Public safety is the most basic responsibility of government and I think the council has exercised very divisive leadership by pushing for staffing reductions before you can see the results of the staffing study you approved. I want a livin' adjust, safe, and well-managed city.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller 228, Kristen McGrath, followed by 229, Donald Joseph, Annie Shaw, Annie Mack, and Doug Ritzema. Go ahead, Kristen McGrath. You can hit star six to unmute. I'm not hearing Kristen, so I'll call on number 229, Donald Joseph. Donald, if you're there, hit star six to unmute. I'm not hearing Donald, so I'll call number 230, Annie Shaw.
Hi, this is caller 215, Nancy.
What was your name?
Meredith Yerick, caller 215.
Great, please go ahead.
I'm from Ward 11 and I'd just like to go back to the evening of May 30, 2020. On the heels of this city's darkest hour, we found ourselves under threat by outside groups preying upon the victim on the vacuum of chaos. As I sat with my neighbors glued to my citizen app under the din of military helicopters, it marked the first time I have ever feared for the safety of my family in this city that I love. A moment for me that also awakened a profound connection to the black and brown people of our community for the type of fear that they must feel every day. It is unfathomable. Fast forward to two weeks ago, where on my block, shots were fired at an innocent woman in a carjacking attempt, again by criminals preying upon the vacuum of known chaos within our city. We cannot continue to incent the chaos that invites this criminal activity. Why is working to protect our residents of color and ensuring safety for our citizens mutually exclusive? I support the mayor's budget to align on a solution that works for the long-term viability of this city. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. That brings us back to Annie Shaw, caller number 230.
My name is Annie. Close to where George Floyd was murdered. My name is Annie and I live in Minneapolis, close to where George Floyd was murdered. The MPD only brought violence to originally peaceful protests. I believe the city should move funds from the policing budget to community programs for homelessness, domestic violence, housing, and education. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is 231, Annie Mack.
Hello?
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Annie Mack, Ward 4. And I am here tonight because I believe that more money for the police will equal more murders. The devastation that has taken place within Minneapolis has been completely disheartening and has broken the spirit of so many. To give more money to an agency that has established itself as a terrorist community to kill black, brown, indigenous people and to create an environment of fear and to create a legacy of authority and the abuse of authority has been extremely horrifying to watch and to witness. I do not agree with funding the police. It will equal more murder. No child should have to live in an environment where police sirens cause them to be alarmed and afraid. It is shameful. And you have the power as a city council to change this and to make sure that there's housing...
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, the time has run out for that speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and thank you, Ms. Mack. I appreciate your testimony. Next up is caller 232, Doug Ritzema, followed by 233, Phyllis Roden, and 234, Fidencio Cruz. Please go ahead, Mr. Ritzma.
Hi, my name is Doug Ritzma and I live in Ward 12. My wife and I moved to Minneapolis two years ago from a neighboring suburb. We moved here because we wanted to be part of the city and the life that Minneapolis had to offer. Now, two years later, we are very concerned about this city's future. The killing of Mr. Floyd showed one concern. The rioting that followed showed another. And the efforts now to defund the police shows yet another. Please make every effort to discipline and remove the bad police officers from our city. But also, please make every effort to support the good police officers in our city and work to elevate the force itself. And if other options should be considered, please make efforts to try those options without so weakening the police department in the process that it will be doomed to failure. I ask you to give our police chief your support in uplifting the individuals and organization for which he is responsible. Reductions in staff at this time is not the way to make Minneapolis a desirable place to live for those who have lived here all their life and for those wanting to come here. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller 233, Phyllis Roden. You can hit star six to unmute.
Hi, my name is Phyllis Roden. I'm a 30-year resident of Minneapolis and currently live in Ward 7. I'm in favor of justice reinvestment, but I'm concerned by a clause in the budget which reduces the number of officers and goes against the recommendation of the police chief. I echo the comments of previous speakers. I think it is premature and irresponsible to guess today what the size of the police force should be three to five years from now. As people move into the city, more officers will be needed and this clause will tie the hands of the police chief for the next two to three years. I urge you to wait for the results of the independent staffing study that you have funded and which is due next year. I urge you to support Chief Arredondo during this challenging time. I support Mayor Frye's budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is 234, Fidencio Cruz.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can hear you. Please go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Hello, yes, welcome. Hello, yes, welcome. Mr. Cruz, I heard you for a moment and then I stopped hearing you, so I'm going to go ahead and call on the next caller.
Okay, hi, my name is, my name is Fidencio Cruz. Yeah, and I'm speaking today as a business owner on Legis3. Uh, I believe, uh, that we need to address the, uh, safety. We need more police officer. Uh, our businesses needs to be a safety place, also for our customers, uh, as well as our, our community. Uh, almost every day I hear stories from customers that they were robbed by, uh, men with guns. Uh, other customers that come as visitors to, uh, Minneapolis, they complain that they don't come as before because they don't feel secure. Uh, all this affecting our businesses, our community. So don't cut the police budget. In the street right now, there are guns, drugs, prostitution, and it will become worse if, you know, if it happens. Criminals are taking advantage of the lack of police officers right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, caller 235 Maureen Foley, followed by 236 Charles Tyree, 237 Carolyn Askew and 238 Bob Link. Uh, go ahead, Maureen Foley. I'm not hearing Maureen Foley. I'll call on 236 Charles Tyree. Hit star six to unmute. Caller 238 Bob Link. Hit star six to unmute.
Bob Link.
Welcome. Please proceed with your testimony.
Hi, this is Bob Link. I'm a 40-year resident of northeast Minneapolis and support the mayor's budget. With increase in crimes with carjacking, robberies, criminals feel emboldened to, uh, in these crimes because of the lack of support from the city council to the police department. My question to you as a city council members, have you done any ride-alongs with our officers? Do you know what's going on there that you've been there yourself? I'm guessing not. Yes, there needs to be accountability to the police and improvement, but there also needs to be accountability to the city council for how you've handled things. Go along with Mayor, Mayor, Mayor Fry's budget and wait for your report to come out and do a good plan, not just cutting in the safety of Minneapolis. People don't want to come to Minneapolis. People are going to start leaving if you keep going along this way. Please work it this smart.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, next is caller 239 Sonia Midels, followed by Walker Rice, Anthony Scallon and Deborah Wagner. Go ahead, Sonia.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Please proceed with your testimony.
Um, my name is Sonia. I live in Ward 10 and I'm happy to see the city council commit to funding resources that truly keep us safe by passing the Safety for All Plan. We got here because thousands of community members demanded it in the streets and in budget hearings. Don't disregard our community by watering down Safety for All. This is the bare minimum that we expect, so please pass it as written. As a reminder to those that seem to have forgotten, police do not prevent crime. They react to it and often this results in the terrorization and sometimes death of our community members. For far too long, police reform has focused on reforms that try to reduce the harms of policing rather than rethink the overall role of policing society. There is little evidence of any to show that more police surveillance results in fewer crimes and greater public safety. I urge the city council to pass the Safety for All Budget Plan as a first step in safety for all in our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next up is caller 240 Walker Reese. Hit star six to unmute.
Um, my. My name is Walker Reese. I live in Ward 6 and I am calling in to support the people's budget. If you feel unsafe leaving your home, please know that, um, no defunding of the police has actually yet happened and any increase in crime is happening with a fully-funded police department. Um, I urge you to consider the limitations of policing as a means to create safety in the community and reform efforts have failed and the redistribution of money into programs to meet the basic needs of our most vulnerable is the only just option. The Safety for All Budget is a first step, but should be seen as a minimum. Please use your power under Minneapolis's government, which is a weak mayor system in every sense of the word, to override a mayoral veto and then work on the police budget, or excuse me, the people's budget. The only good use for a police force is glue. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you for your testimony. Next up is caller 241 Anthony Scallon. You can hit star six to unmute.
Um, I'm supporting the mayor's budget. I'm also supporting very strongly the hiring of police officers. I hear that it doesn't matter, yet we've had the worst re, uh, uh, bevy of assaults and all kinds of, uh, car shootings and carjackings. I, I think that the city council should not defund the police. And, uh, what's more and what scared me, I'm a good Democrat, but we lost a lot of elections because of the defunding the police, uh, issues that some council members have come. So I urge you to, uh, adopt the mayor's
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, next is caller 242 Deborah Wagner, followed by Patrick Ray and Daniel Engelhardt. Please go ahead with your testimony, Deborah Wagner.
Hello, my name is Deborah Wagner. I'm a 36-year resident of the Jordan neighborhood in north Minneapolis. I speak in support of Mayor Fry's budget proposal. We are in the middle of the largest spike in crime since 1995 when our city was dubbed Murderopolis. This time, the entire city is under siege. Cut law enforcement budget at this time when the police currently don't have enough resources to handle the current situation seems like madness to me. In fact, while affecting the entire city, the crime unduly affects the resident, the black residents in poorer communities, with the entire community threatened by random gunfire entering homes, terrorizing whole families. Everyone was horrified by the video of George Floyd in his last moments of life while in police custody, but taking your anger out on the entire police force by cutting their budget at the same time sacrificing the safety of Minneapolis residents.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, if you had more to say, uh, you can certainly email, uh, council comment with, uh, the remainder of your remarks. Uh, next is caller 243 Patrick Ray.
Is it possible for me to give my time? Thank you. Is it possible for me to give my time to Ms. Wagner?
Uh, sure.
When she ran out. Okay. Uh, Deborah, are you still on? If not, that's okay. I can talk.
All right.
Okay. Um, yeah, I'm Deborah's neighbor. I didn't know she was calling before me. Um, she, like the rest of our neighbors, uh, know how terrible it is in north Minneapolis right now. Um, I'm hearing from people who have lived here their entire lives, um, black neighbors, white neighbors, monk neighbors, Hispanic neighbors. Everybody knows it's terrible right now and, um, cutting the police budget, it's just, it's not a good idea. And, uh, I am in favor of, uh, the mayor, uh, his budget and, uh, am hopeful, uh, that he will, uh, have the courage to veto the city council's budget. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, next up is caller 244 Daniel Engelhardt.
Uh, Dan Engel.
Welcome, Dan.
Oh, wait, am I just now talking? Anyway, Dan Engelhardt, Ward 1 resident, uh, and I'm imploring the council to at least approve the Safety for All. Uh, people's budget would be great. I represent state employees. I govern under POGRA, the same law that the Police Federation works under. For years and years, we've been gaslit and lied to that you can't do things and with no, no further proof than Mayor Fry coming out and saying, "We can't change policy" and then changing it the very same day, saying, "We're gonna, you know, not bargain, but then change a policy that we've been told we can't change forever." Council member Fletcher, you've been brave enough to show that the, the corrupt occupying force that's killing people slows down calls if you stand up to them in the li, in the littlest of ways. So why would we put any more money towards this corrupt occupying force that is literally killing people, white people too, may I remind you all? So at least support the Safety for All, move towards the people's budget. This is, why put any more money to this corrupt force? When we start seeing reform, maybe then, but putting more to it and then having to deal with it later, that's just irresponsible.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, next up is 245 Patrick Handley, followed by 246 Nikki Cotta, uh, and 247 Jim Durda. Uh, go ahead, Patrick Handley.
Hello, my name is, uh, Patrick. Hello, hello, my name is Patrick Handley and I live in Ward 12. I believe in a both and approach. I support Mayor Fry and the police chief staffing recommendations for the PD. Given all the recent violent crime that is occurring and at this point in time, it is not prudent to reduce the PD staffing level. In the future, it may be time to reduce it, but not at this time. Should the council vote to reduce the PD staff, I fully support a veto by Mayor Fry. Thank you for your
Thank you. Next up is caller 246 Nikki Cotta.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yes.
Hi there, my name is Nikki Cotta. I live in Ward, um, 9 currently, and I just want to let you know that I support the people's budget. Um, I do not support Mayor Fry and his budget. Um, and I am optimistic that we can finally make, um, some much-needed change, um, in our city and by, uh, investing in community and taking, um, unnecessary funds out of the police budget. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up is caller 247 Jim Durda, followed by Susan Herridge and Elizabeth Lindsay. Go ahead, Jim Durda.
Hi, this is Jim Durda, General Manager of City Center. Excuse my voice, I'm losing it. Um, anyway, we pay about $7 million in real estate taxes, about $2 million in fiscal disparities for a total of $9 million. We have high expectations, actually not reasonable expectations for the city's services. I was born in North Minneapolis, uh, and I've been working downtown for 27 years in tall towers. I understand what big taxes are. Um, we'll do what we can to help the police. Uh, I'm urging you to, uh, please help the police. Um, we have tenants, Big Box and Small Immigrant Stores. Their employees don't feel safe. They can't, uh, walk out of Niklet Mall without feeling, uh, unsafe. They can't take the bus without unfeeling unsafe. Um, according to a published list of largest police departments in the state, in the country, uh, Minneapolis ranks 49. Um, you know, Denver, our comparable city where we're losing business, 1400, Nashville, 1400. Um, we need radical change in the police department, no doubt. Get the right guy in charge. We need more social services, absolutely no doubt. They gotta work together. We urge you to help.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, I'll call on caller 248 Susan Herridge. You can hit star six to unmute.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you. Please proceed with your testimony.
It takes a second. Okay. My name is Susan Herridge and I'm currently a member of the Lindale neighborhood in Ward 8. I've lived in Minneapolis for 54 years and before that was Tangle Town, Lynnhurst and Windham, so a long-time resident. I'm speaking in support of the Safety for All Budget Amendment, which, you know, I'm listening to the testimony tonight. I know defunding sounds really scary, but if you look at just what that amendment says, it is, to me, a very appropriate reallocation of a very modest chunk of a budget that would actually help the police by getting more police calls into hands of trained people that could handle it better and freeing them up to do other things. So I'm not sure it's worth the hissy fit that the mayor and the chief are having about, quote, cuts to the budget because it's really a reallocation and other people will be doing the work and helping the police. I also want to say that I'm very proud of the council for the way they worked on this and I'm especially want to commend you for the open testimony periods, the patience and the, and how respectful you are to people that.
Thank you for your testimony. Uh, and that's proof that we're using the timer to cut off anybody even when they're complimenting us. Uh, with that, I will hand the gavel back to Council President Bender after we get the next testifier started. I'm going to call on caller 249 Elizabeth Lindsay. I'm not hearing caller 249, so I'll call on caller 250 Lydia Beerbaum. I'm not hearing Lydia, so I will call on 251 Mark Anderson.
Hello, this is, uh, Mark Anderson with, uh, Barbara Schneider Foundation, which is formed in partnership with Minneapolis Police Department to create the first CIT program in Minnesota. CIT is spread around the state and now Minnesota has mandated de-escalation training for all officers. MPD was a leader in the collaboration between police and mental health, including in the nationally-known memorandum of agreement that they signed with the Unity Community Mediation Team. Chief Arredondo is advancing this agenda. Fewer police mean more arrests. The county jail has 30,000-plus bookings annually of inmates, half of which have a mental health history. But now, we know that the main barrier to de-escalation in our communities is not mental illness, it is trauma caused by criminal violence, abuse and neglected by our systems, by the economic and social pressures that create our worst-in-the-nation racial disparities in Minneapolis. MPD has been part of the solution. Communities need them. Support the Unity Community Mediation Team and do not fund.
Thank you, sir. Speaker 252 is Natasha Lipinski.
Hi, this is Natasha Lipinski. Thank you all so much, city council members and the community that's listening tonight. Um, just by listening to the testimony, you can care, um, you can see and hear how much people care and are passionate about this issue. I think it's important to note that the language that you're hearing around defunding the police is not a buzz, it's not a slogan, it's, it's a policy position that has been around for decades. Um, there's been a lot of work done both by MPD 150 and groups around the Twin Cities and across the nation that have invested research time and have the strategies that work. For myself, I've been doing restorative and transformative justice for over 12 years. There's seven nonprofits in the Twin Cities that do this work and hundreds of people that are trained in this work. We know that the policing and the way that we do it in this country is rotten from the core. It is time for restorative and transformative justice. Please pass the people's budget. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Speaker 253 is Brandy Bennett, Bennett, followed by Ryan Watts, Matt Swenson and Susan Hitchner. 253 is Brandy Bennett.
Hi, this is Downtown Brandy. These budget cuts are reducing MPD to a bare-bones force of robo-cops, cops that only respond to violent crimes, homicides, rapes, carjackings and shootings. Imagine a police officer that only sees violence for their 10-hour shift. What will the impact be on their mental health? You could fund 1,000 positions next year, but who in their right mind would apply to work in blood and misery day in and day out? You are leaving no time for community engagement, no time to stop at a child's birthday party, no time to hand out blankets to the homeless, no beat cops that work with business owners and residents. Every unit within MPD that builds bridges has been or is being stripped away. Bite cops, pals, mounted patrol. Chief Arredondo created the community navigator position to build relationships between police and the community. You are taking that from him. You are removing the crime prevention specialist from the MPD umbrella. Stop with the defunding. I support Mayor Fry's budget.
Thank you. 254 is Ryan Watts.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
This is Ryan Watts, Ward 13. First, thank you, Linnea, for your rational thinking and voting. I'm calling in support of the police chief and the mayor's budget and to support a veto if required. No doubt our policing needs reform for more accountability and equality. However, defunding is not the answer. We need more funding to make that happen, not less. Let's stop the political polarization that has made its way from the White House and now all the way down to our own city council. There are valid points on both sides of this discussion, but this should not be an either-or choice. The city received a pledge of at least $5 million last week from private business to help fund social services and new models of public safety. Use that money for non-policing initiatives and keep the police department properly funded. If the council could stop chasing where our much-needed tax base with irrational decision-making, we could have funding to support both proper social services and funding to reform, recruit, and train our police force. We need fair, safe, and effective policing. Let's support the chief and the mayor's budget to provide the proper resources to make that happen. Thank you.
Thanks. Speaker 255 Matt Swenson.
My name is Matt Swenson. My wife and I bought our first home in Tangletown last fall. We love our neighborhood and our neighbors. We hope to raise our family here in a safe, vibrant city that gives all its residents equitable access to justice and opportunity, no matter their race, age, or address. We were horrified by the murder of George Floyd, and like our neighbors, we are demanding change, because black lives matter. I believe we can make urgently needed, long-overdue reforms without drastic and dangerous cuts to our already diminished police force. Someone tried to break into our house this summer. Three of our neighbors have been burglarized, and just down the street in broad daylight, two criminals shot brazenly into a woman's car as she begged for her life. An elected official's first and most sacred responsibility is ensuring the safety of their community. This budget does not meet that high standard. I urge a no vote, and if needed, a swift and decisive veto. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 256 Susan Hichner.
Susan Hichner, welcome. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. A key duty of the Minneapolis City Council is to provide for the health and welfare of the city and its inhabitants. Violence and crime are surging, yet the council has voted to reduce the size of the police force, and several members are proposing an $8 million additional budget cuts. Residents and businesses are begging the city council to return to common sense governance. Yes, to police reform, additional training, and a fully funded police force. Yes, to creating a separate fund for mental health service and finding alternatives to some police calls. But no, excuse me, no to robbing Peter to pay Paul. They are not mutually exclusive. Minneapolis City Council, please fulfill your duty. Keep Minneapolis safe, fully fund the police, and figure out a way to fund the other services. Thank you.
Thank you. We're at 8:30, which means we have one hour left in our public testimony. The Clerk's Office has updated our LIM system on the website to include six amendments that council members will be bringing after the hearing. Our next speaker is 257 Ryan Brennan.
Hi, I'm Ryan Brennan, I'm in Ward one. So, thank you, Madam President. I'm calling to ask the city council members to please strike Amendment 14A5 and to change the funding in Amendment 14D to be on an ongoing basis. CM Fletcher, during Monday's Budget Committee meeting, you said that lowering the authorized number of sworn officers to 750 was to reflect the reality on the ground, and the reality on the ground is that our current low police staffing numbers aren't working. Our chief has repeatedly asked for 1,000 or more officers throughout recent years, and over those years, those requests have been denied, which has contributed to the failures of MPD and the erosion of public trust. Then those failures, partially caused by lack of support from the city council, are used as justification for further denial of support for MPD. So the real status quo of our recent past has been not adequately funding MPD. Our chief is trying to improve the department, so please give him the resources he needs to do so. Everyone in this forum is concerned about the quality of MPD, and an understaffed department of any nature is going to lack quality. So please continue your great work in proposing mental health response and crime prevention initiatives, but please...
Thank you. Speaker 258 is Ashley Hart. We'll then have Tessa Cunningham, Igor Ray, and Melissa Ellering. 258 is Ashley Hart.
Hello.
Welcome.
Excellent. My name is Ashley Hart, Executive Director at the Shift Co-op in Ward five. In the midst of a full-blown pandemic, you actually have an obligation to prioritize people's health and safety. Committing to the Safety for All budget is a positive first step, but it is the bare minimum. You must support the People's Budget as is. I urge you to fund profound change in how we run our city and we care for each other. Put money where your mouth is. If you can't commit to funding real solutions to the many crises Minneapolis faces, why are you even representing us? We're all here today because Mayor Frye is pressuring y'all to meet a bottom line, right? Since May, that's all he's done. So let's be honest. Mayor Frye is a money-hungry, cop-loving, black-and-brown, community-destroying punk who'd rather throw a fit than uplift his city. What a shameful excuse for leadership. He's a disgrace, and so are the racist, murderous police he so avidly stands behind. Safety isn't and should not be a privilege. Make the right choice today, council, or you're going to be on the wrong side of history for the next 400 years. Thank you for your time, and as always, Dr.
Thank you. Speaker 259 Tessa Cunningham.
My name is Tessa Cunningham, I live in Ward one. On May 25th, George Floyd was murdered by Derek Chauvin of the MPD. On May 31st, MPD sprayed a chemical irritant at point-blank range. A victim slain the I-35 bridge after a tanker truck narrowly missed them. Concerned onlookers were also maced without warning as MPD drove past. Video of this was published on Twitter and has been viewed 7 million times. On November 4th, 600-plus demonstrators were kettled and arrested on I-94 by unmasked police officers. They were held for six-plus hours, increasing their risk of contracting COVID. This event is available for each of you to watch on the Unicorn Riot website. These are just a few of the atrocities MPD was willing to commit while the world was watching. To reallocate 4% of the police budget to the people and organizations that are actually working to keep our community safe is the bare minimum this council should be doing. Our community deserves so much more, and MPD deserves so much less.
Thank you. Speaker 260 Igor Ray. The next speaker is 261 Melissa Ellering.
Hi, this is Melissa Ellering. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Okay. I live in Ward 10. I'm here to ask you to give our police chief the freedom and flexibility to do his job. It is premature and irresponsible to guess today what size the police force should be three to five years from now. Wait for the independent staffing study that you have funded for next year. You have no plans for transition, which is a recipe for disaster. Police deter crime. We need more police, not fewer, to protect residents and businesses. We know your arbitrary cap is a veiled ploy to defund, downsize, and abolish policing in our city. Mayor Frye, I support your veto of this budget if this city continues to handcuff our police chief and place all our lives in further danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 262 Chris Hewitt. Yes, welcome.
Hello, I'm Chris.
Hello.
Chris, go ahead, please.
Hello, okay. Hello, my name is Chris Hewitt, and I live in Ward four. I am here to voice my concerns for the so-called Safety for All amendment. The majority of the people in this city, including myself, want police reforms but are for no cuts to the policing numbers, despite what some groups try and say with their pre-scripted statements and alternate utopian budgets. In fact, only 40% want cuts to the policing numbers based on the most recent polling. The National Alliance of Mental Health has also come out and said that they are not for this amendment. We see through the council's charade, and every cut is a belly punch to all the 80 families of those who have been murdered this year on the bloody-soaked streets of this city, mostly those of color. The data clearly shows that if you want to put programs in place, you need to run them alongside the police, not instead of the police. This council has failed this city, and we urge for the mayor's veto. Thank you.
Thank you. Was there another speaker who had been called before?
I mean, I waited quite a while there. I got to speak, but I'm pretty sure I got cut off. Maybe I was yelling too much.
No, sir, we only, we have to keep moving, or we won't reach everyone. Each person has 60 seconds, I'm sorry to say. That brings us to Speaker 263 Scott Bertelson. We'll then have Becca Thompson, Heather Magnussen, and Cindy Lou Ferris. Speaker 263 is Scott Bertelson. Speaker 264 is Becca Thompson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Becca Thompson, and I live and work on the north side. I live in the highs and I work in the lows, and if you're a north sider, you know what that means. And I am calling yet again to support the chief and the mayor's budget. Many on the council said there's been lots of engagement and overwhelming support for your Safety for All plan, but I would like to ask, how did you engage our elderly citizens in the middle of a pandemic in less than two weeks? How did you engage children and families who are working from home and stressed over multiple levels of school, especially on the north side where my students and my child reside? My council members done nothing more than a few Facebook posts. I don't know if that's engagement. Additionally, overwhelming support is not quantifiable. I'm curious to know hard, actual numbers and demographics of what and whom you polled for this. If you could make that data publicly available before the vote, that would be fantastic in an effort of transparency. Lastly, tonight's call is obviously skewed, because working people don't have hours to sit on a public call when they're with their families and helping their children with homework, and then they go back to work at 4:00 AM like my neighbors. I'm here because I can be, and I would like to be a voice for my neighbors who cannot. Mayor Frye, if you have to, veto this. Thank you.
Thank you. 265 Heather Magnussen.
Hello, this is Heather Magnussen.
Welcome.
Thank you. I've lived in Ward 11 for 17 years. I'm asking the council to support our police chief and give him the necessary tools to do his job effectively. It is extremely obvious, listening to the public comments, that we are a fractured city, and I am saddened by the divisive language and the finger-pointing. Crime is up, that is a fact, and we cannot ignore it. I urge this council and other residents to remember that when a crime occurs, and there are plenty of them occurring right now, there's often a victim at the other end of that crime. And often, those victims are people of color. What about them? Do they not deserve resources, protection, and support? I'm asking that you wait to receive the independent staffing study before you decide how many officers Minneapolis needs. It also seems to me that if you want better-trained officers, you add to their budget, not subtract from it. We have a true gem in our police chief, and I trust his expertise to tell us what is needed to help get this city back on track. I ask you to do the same and support the mayor to exercise his veto power if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 266 Cindy Lou Ferris.
Hi, my name is Cindy Ferris, and I live in Ward 11. I'm here to ask the council to give the police chief the freedom he needs to do his job. I ask the council to take a prudent approach when it comes to staffing the police. Please wait until the independent staffing research comes out in 2021 to determine staffing numbers. Police deter crime. We need more police, not less, to protect us and our local businesses. By capping the police officers' numbers, the council puts my safety at risk. Mayor Frye, I fully support your veto if this budget continues to handcuff our chief. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Speaker 267 Benjamin Broughton.
Hello.
Yes, hello.
I'm Benjamin Broughton. I am a north side resident. I recognize the importance of a both-and approach. What the council is doing is not a both-and approach. It is a maybe kind of approach, given that a reduced MPD isn't able to provide underlying the foundation of safety both residents and OVP depend on. Additionally, I'm greatly alarmed that by reducing MPD staffing and thereby overworking officers, while at the same time removing existing connections between the MPD and the community, the council is fomenting an environment that may lead to more murders like Mr. Floyd. The lack of safety residents are expressing is not hypothetical or ideological, but a reality. When someone is slain by a bullet, they cannot be brought back. Further, only peace officers can perform law enforcement duties per state statute. The demand for those duties has been increasing, while our supply of peace officers is decreasing. Mayor Frye, I support your veto of this budget if this council persists in their frightening pound-for-pound.
Thank you. Speaker 268 is Andy Snow.
I'm caller 269, can you hear me? I've been trying for a while. Can you hear me?
Yes, hello. What is your name and number?
Elizabeth Lindsay, Ward 12. I think I was number 249.
Welcome. Thanks for coming. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm a formerly homeless, not resident of Minneapolis, but a resident of Southern California, a city arguably much further down the line of only rental housing as opposed to starter housing. During this call, I was trying to do triage for a homeless person I know who has mental issues. Anyway, I'm intimately familiar with people who fall through the cracks. I fall through them myself. And having been at the end of a broom saying, "Get along, get out of this doorway," and having been someone who now is blessed to own a home in this beautiful, yet ruined city, I'm asking you to look at the reality of the destruction of Lake, the lack of support or any visible financing to rebuild Lake, and also the dichotomy of your $70 million in bike lanes, your $70, your $7 million in upgrades to the impound lot and the smart meters in a dead downtown. I would ask you, as I have before, to reimagine the budget as a whole. Your city needs you to be nimble now. It's not just about one issue.
Thank you. Speaker 268 is Andy Snow.
Hi, this is caller 260.
Hi, welcome. Go ahead.
Thank you. Also, thank you to Andy. My name is Igor Ray, and I live in Ward nine, and I'm an organizer with the Sex Workers Outreach Project. I am so heartened to see the city council vote for the Safety for All plan. I know it takes great courage and leadership to address longstanding inequities in our community by taking this step. I'm in support of the People's Budget. Looking at this document, you can see the power of a thoughtful, collaborative, solutions-focused community. Many of us who have been historically disenfranchised have been left out of these processes. It is powerful to see what we can do when we're not strong-armed by fear and by the belief that funneling our resources into MPD is the only recourse towards safety. We have so many solutions. Low-income housing, direct economic relief, existing grassroots outreach efforts, and harm reduction are already occurring in business of our investment. Councilpersons Gordon and Jenkins, thank you for your openness in discussing swap's outreach efforts. I'm looking forward to building community-based safety solutions with all of the council members. Councilperson Kano, especially as your constituent in the ward adjacent to where George Floyd was killed by MPD. I look forward...
Thank you. Speaker 268 Andy Snow.
So I am Andy Snow. I also organize the Swap Minneapolis, and I'm a resident of Ward one. I also support the city council's thoughtful Safety for All plan, and would like to remind people that vetoing the budget is destructive to all city services. The violence the people in the sex trade experience is unacceptable. The ACLU reports that nine out of 10 black trans sex workers, or those profiled as such, have experienced violence by the police. Those of us within the sex trade are best able to keep our people safe from both state and interpersonal violence. As my colleague Igor so thoughtfully pointed out, we have a detailed plan. Our partner orgs have brilliant plans. Supporting and funding communities is the most pro-Miniapolis thing we can do, which is why I really support the People's Budget. And shout out to elevators. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 269 Valentina McKenzie. Then we'll have Brian Barnes, Catherine Colbert, Janelle Austin, and Karen Winkler. 269 is Valentina McKenzie. 269 is Valentina McKenzie. 272 is Janelle Austin.
This is Janelle.
Yes, welcome.
Hi, this is Janelle. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Janelle Austin. I am Black from Ward 8 in George Floyd Square. I support the People's Budget. I support justice, which is the process of making things right. This budget is not right because the MPD is not right. On Friday, I witnessed them use excessive spending and force with 12 cop cars to arrest one man. They pushed my friend and pulled a gun on her when she calmly asked why they were arresting him. They pushed an on-duty member of AGAPE, a respectable organization for community safety. They targeted, body slammed, and arrested a watching bystander. They slammed the head of their suspect, all in custody, against the windshield of a vehicle. These violations happen steps away from where Derek Chauvin lynched George Floyd. Please reallocate more of the MPD budget to expand funding to areas that bring justice, such as integrative health services, jobs with livable wages, grants for BIPOC-owned businesses, undoing racism training, the 2019 Living Beauty and Safety Platform proposal, resources for vulnerable youth, and accessible housing. Our budget must bring stability and justice for people. Justice brings safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 273, Karen Winkler. 274, Jake Reber. We'll then have Elizabeth Gray, Doug Tanner, and Julia DeLuca. 274 is Jake Reber.
Hi, this is Jake.
Welcome.
I live in Ward 11, Jeremy Schroeder's Ward. I'm a gay person and I don't need or want others to speak for me, as I have heard many do on this call. I personally lived through and experienced social injustice. I'm tired of others saying that they speak for me. I can tell you that I fully support the mayor's budget and this police chief. I trust his judgment and planned approach. Trying to tie his hands and take away officer resources will make me as a minority less safe, not more. I support the mayor's budget 100% and Mayor Frye, I support you, as does many of my gay friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 275, Elizabeth Gray.
Hi, this is Elizabeth Gray. I have lived and worked in Ward 3 for 22 years. I support Mayor Frye's budget. I do not support the Safety For All Amendment or the People's Budget Plan. Some council members have worked very hard educating themselves about public safety, but that does not eliminate the need to work with the leader of the police department. Practical experience is still a critical skill set in police budgeting and resource planning. Eliminating programs such as the mounted police, which enables a well-rounded and responsive police force, are ill-informed. I thank councilmembers Goodman and Palmasano for being voices of reason and moderation during contentious discussions. Compromise and not ideology is in order when the city is so divided. I support Mayor Frye's plan as it does not require the MPD to attempt reform while protecting the city with one arm tied behind their back. Thank you.
Thank you. 276 is Doug Tanner.
I'm Doug Tanner, Bancroft neighborhood. My wife and I have been homeowners in Minneapolis for 40 years and have a lot invested here because we love it. She worked at Abbott during that time, took the bus up Chicago Avenue, and never had a problem. Our kids went to Minneapolis schools, K through 12, and never had a problem. Minneapolis has a big crime problem. People are dying. It's hypocritical that you guys get free private police protection. When you felt threatened, you called the police. My wife was carjacked, robbed, and assaulted. It's open season on women. The fact that this council does not even acknowledge there is a problem is irresponsible. The crime rate is at an all-time high and you want less cops on the street? Where does common sense come into the equation? Your reforms look good on paper, but that does not necessarily translate into real life. We need more cops. I want to fully fund the mayor's police budget and give Chief Arredondo what he needs to do his job.
Thank you. Speaker 277 is Julia DeLuca.
Julia?
Welcome.
Hi, my name is Julia. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I'm entering Ward 3 and I'm calling with Isaiah. The city has, having difficult conversations around community safety and I'm grateful that the city council has found a way to meet some of our needs through the Safety For All Budget Plan. And I ask you to continue your support for this proposal as written. I also urge that Mayor Frye withdraw his plan to veto the Safety For All Budget proposal. It would be irresponsible to veto the budget as it would undermine progress towards racial justice in Minneapolis and vastly cut the budget, devastating our city during a pandemic, all to protect MPD. Safety for all is just the first step and I encourage you to pass the People's Budget and invest policies that care for people. I'd like the Minneapolis government to do its part in caring for and meeting the needs of all residents, Black, White, and Brown. When we care for people, we will restore the public trust and government and we will have true community safety. Thank you.
Thank you. 279 is Brianna Patnott. Then it will be Danielle Corby, Chris Lepink Shands, and DeMarcus Arthur Brooks. 283, Maggie Peterson. You may have remuted. Folks will need to push star six to unmute.
Hi, this is Maggie Peterson.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Hi, sorry about that. I am a part of the Twin Cities Mutual Aid Project and we support the People's Budget. I can give all of the statistics in the world during my time, but none of it matters when we have elected officials seeing MPD destroying our community and saying, you know, this is fine. Mayor Frye, while you hide away in your ivory tower threatening to veto this budget, allowing your cops with no masks to prevent the spread of COVID assault and murder my neighbors, it's despicable. We are the ones creating communities of care that you are not providing and that MPD sure as hell is not providing either. It is irresponsible for you to even raise the threat of vetoing this and following through with it would be downright destructive. No pair of jorts will ever make you relatable and respected by us when you blatantly disregard the lives of the people you are supposed to be protecting. I yield my time.
Thank you. 284 is Joshua Christensen. Then we'll have James Ronnie, Tahiti Robinson, and Steve Tannen. Joshua Christensen. 285 is James Ronnie.
Hello.
Welcome.
Hello, my name is James Ronnie and I live in Ward 13. We need a fully funded and fully staffed MPD now, more than ever. There is widespread support for identifying and validating supplemental and alternative public safety proposals. However, there is no need to do so at the expense of police staffing and public safety. Police do prevent crime. Police do provide safety. Your anti-police budget proposals serve only to hobble the MPD and intentionally set the department and Chief Arredondo up for failure. You are prematurely dismissing your own staffing study and recklessly cutting our number one public safety resource. With your budget proposal, you disrespect our duly-elected mayor, you disrespect Chief Arredondo, and you disrespect your constituents and our need for safety. Please support the mayor, support the chief, support public safety by supporting a healthy, well-staffed, community-integrated MPD. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have 30 minutes left of our hearing. We may not get to the very last speaker, so if you're past 300 or so, you could feel free to email us and we will do our best to move quickly. Yes, who is this?
I'm Joshua Christensen, number 284.
Yes, welcome. Go ahead.
I live in Ward 10. I support the public Safety For All amendments to the budget to implement city-wide mental health response and to reassign positions outside of MPD. I additionally support implementing the People's Budget. For now, the city council mayor must pass a budget that allows us to reform public safety in Minneapolis. The time is now, not later, to make changes. We can say Black Lives Matter all we want, but it's hard to be taken seriously when we call to continue throwing money at the system that's led to the death of George Floyd and others. I implore Mayor Frye to pass this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. 268 is Tahiti Robinson.
Oh, Tahiti Robinson. We do not, thank you. We do not want the mayor to veto the Safety For All budget. If he does so, that will be cutting $20 million from city programs to stand with the police and will show where his priority lies. My friend is homeless and she's been told by police officers that she can park, can't park at the vacant lots overnight, even though she is just trying to have a safe place to sleep at night. Why is it that in a city with more vacant housing than I can count, we are prioritizing, harassing people like my friend instead of finding him a place to live? I urge the city council to vote on a budget that pre- prioritize getting our homeless affordable housing instead of funding their harassment. Help us make our city and our state more beautiful and friendly by making it more liable for everybody.
Thank you. Speaker 287 is Steve Tannen.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Steve Tannen. I'm a 20-year Hispanic Minneapolis resident. I'm a Yussa Sock combat veteran, small business owner, dad of three girls. First of all, I support Mayor Frye, Chief Arredondo, and Linay Palmasano. Secondly, I am definitely for reform, restructure, and retraining of MPD. Yes, it's a great idea to have mental health and social workers at each precinct. Yes, I fully support city council members riding along with MPD every quarter in their precinct. I do believe that residency incentives for MPD will help community building and definitely, yes, to 1,000 officers to promote public safety and reduce crime. If you are a young Caucasian liberal affluent person without a family, you do not speak for me. You do not speak for this minority and this minority family. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 288, Lisa Data. Then we'll have Lynn Langit, Jim Galvin, and Sue Campbell. 288 is Lisa Data.
This is Lisa Data from Ward 2. I am asking for a veto to the cuts to the police budget and support the mayor's budgets. There has already been a privately funded pledge for $5 million that can be used for alternative policing. I want the chief to have the freedom to do his job. We cannot ask the citizens of Minneapolis, especially our most vulnerable, to be subject to an experiment. We have the chance to build a diverse police department and we cannot afford to lose that. As a victim of domestic violence, I feel that police presence is the most effective to prevent further harm. I'm also the parent of a disabled child. I cannot allow the disabled population of the city to be driven out by the current community violence. And after listening in on these budget calls, I want to ask all citizens to stop the vitriol and the shaming. If people continue this and not work together to address the issues from discrimination to housing to violence, the budget will cease to be an issue. If you care about the community, groups like Big Brother, Breach Sister are facing shortages, please volunteer and make the difference in the life of a young person. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 289 is Lynn Langit.
Hi, I'm Lynn Langit, Ward 3. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
I support the mayor's budget. After 22 years in Southern California, I chose to move to Minneapolis in 2019 to live in what I thought would be a diverse and functioning city. Because of living in SoCal, I know a gang problem when I see one. A 500% year-over-year increase in gang-related carjackings is a public safety emergency. Support our chief, fund the police. I can't imagine who would want to be an officer here now. My brother, who's a judge in the Midwest, has said, when the gangs come in, your agencies should be working together to get them out. City council, do you actually think less police? With less police, the gang bangers will just leave? The majority of our citizens do not agree with you. Also, I lived in SoCal during the Rodney King riots. 63 people were killed and 2,400 people were shot by the US military. So what is going to happen here during the trial this spring if we don't have any local police? Who exactly are the mental health professionals who want to be first responders to violence? Who would be our?
Thank you. Speaker 290, Jim Galvin.
Hi, I'm Jim Galvin, a veteran, and I live in Ward 10, the Whittier neighborhood. I don't need to go outside my home to feel unsafe when gang members have a broad daylight sheet out hitting my home. I'm for the mayor's budget and for Chief Arredondo because he is the only one having a conversation with the community and offering real solutions. Defunding the police with the council's attempt to hide their failure, Mayor Frye, I support your veto. Send a clear message to the council that our safety is not negotiable. You are the voice for the 80 murders, the 500 gunshots, and other victims, including their families, that can't be here today to tell their story. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Speaker 291, Sue Campbell.
Hello, Sue Campbell here.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Hi, President Bender, in June you went on CNN to talk about the concept of privilege and calling the police, but at the same time, some of the other council members thought nothing of using taxpayers-funded security for themselves because they felt unsafe. But Minneapolis residents of all races were and continue to be terrorized by violent criminals because you allowed our police department to be decimated. Over the past several months, there has been talk on social media that you do not even live in the 10th Ward anymore and you are living in Duluth. Many people believe this and it seems feasible since you can safely work behind a computer all day, unlike, unlike the rest of us who have to go door jobs in a violent, crime-infested city. Where is our privilege? And why do you continue to insist on implementing disastrous policies for Minneapolis when you have already mentally and maybe physically moved on? Bender, you need to resign today. You have you put your own interests and safety ahead of your constituents and we all have had enough of your nonsense and hypocrisy. The rest of you council members were running again.
Thank you. Speaker 292, Jamari Jones.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Greetings, President Bender. I am Jamari Jones from PYC School of Technology and Arts, special events co-chair for the Minnesota Second Chance Coalition, as well as doing work with the Youth Advisory Board on youth reform and youth justices, and currently a field reporter, field reporter on KRSM Radio. My original testimony recited December 22nd, I expressed my favor towards the People's Budget, but I believe a portion of the budget should be placed in the youth programs and other justice organizations. I would like for certain matters to be reevaluated in the past, in the future cases of police brutality as well. We can revisit some of these passages where the same problem has, where... If we can revisit some of these passages where the same problem has, where it did occur, people would at least know the punishment for discrimination and also know that the situation will be handled accordingly to a guideline or a set of law. We need to build a foundation where our youth and minorities can actually visualize the change in their communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 293, Bill Rodriguez.
Hey, good evening. I am a member of the Latino community, and it's important for you to understand that not all of us believe in a utopian, policeless society. We value common sense. We need both well-funded police and alternative public safety programs, especially if those programs have been tested and vetted, preferably with pilot money, not police money, you know, the way good governance is supposed to work. This cap that you are proposing on future police hiring, it has nothing to do with our safety. It has everything to do with your political agenda. It is a naked power grab. Mayor Frye, if these zealots do not back down tonight, exercise your veto. Now more than ever, we need pragmatic, competent, collaborative leadership. Mayor Frye, bring it. Do not back down. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Speaker 294, Suzy Passens.
The hardest question I have to answer these days is, "How are you?" You wouldn't think that should be so tough, but as a victim of an assault and carjacking six weeks ago, that question leaves me searching for the answer. I'm wounded, no longer physically, but emotionally. The slightest noise can trigger a fight-and-play response. I am angry. How can four teenagers possibly think that being a woman in the middle of the street is okay? Was it just for a thrill, or did they get rewarded with cash by someone older? I am shocked by the blatant disregard of the Minneapolis residents by our City Council. Everything we say falls on deaf ears. I support Chief Arredondo and the MPD. Police presence is urgently needed to restore safety to our city. I implore a veto by Mayor Frye if needed.
Thank you. 295 is Kate Moore.
Hello, Kate Moore here. Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Great, thank you so much. You guys are doing a great job tonight. Thank you, and thank you to all the listeners. I want to call, I am a member of Ward 8. I am a queer, white, cis-female homeowner, and I am in support of the People's Budget. I believe the Safety for All Plan is absolutely moving the needle in the right direction, and so I want to commend all of you for your movement towards justice. And I want to remind us all of a quote from Paul Wellstone, "We all do better when we all do better." And just to remind us that the quote is not, you know, "We all do better when white property owners have this perceived increase in a sense of safety while other, our marginalized members of our community are actively afraid for their lives." That does not feel like a safe city, and so I really want to encourage you to support the People's...
Thank you. Speaker 296 is Carol Becker.
Thank you. Last time I spoke, I talked about the fact that I've been, I've had criminals at my house three times. I'm on a route, they come every month, they're going to come next month and steal my catalytic converter again. And nothing's being done. There are no cops to respond when we call in the middle of the night, there are no cops to investigate when we give them, literally give them the license plate numbers to investigate. But one of the things I don't talk much about is, I am actually Dr. Carol Becker, and I have my doctorate in public administration. You guys have premised all of your changes on the idea that you're going to start programs that don't exist, and somehow, in the meantime, we're just supposed to kind of just deal with the crime, because someday your programs are going to work. What do we do in the meantime, before your programs are implemented? Or what happens when your programs don't work out the way that you intended? Kind of like the ones where you have the violence interrupters that didn't work. So before you bat on the com, please, please don't cut cops until you know that you don't need them anymore. Support Frye's budget, the common sense budget, the budget that this city needs.
Thank you. 297, Lars Nixet.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, my name is Lars Nixet, I live in Ward 12, and I'm with Isaiah. I wanted to thank the majority of the City Council for voting for the Safety for All Proposal. It's an important, concrete step in the right direction. Over the past couple of years, there's been a rather twisty debate about what power the City Council actually has over the Minneapolis police. The charter gives, quote, "complete power" to the mayor, and the mayor fought strenuously against amending that charter. So where is the reform part of this "both and" we keep hearing about? It is not enough for the mayor to say his hands are tied until the state legislature passes real arbitration reform, and it is irresponsible for him to threaten to veto the Safety for All Plan. I congratulate the council majority for using what power you do have, namely the budget. I urge you to rebuff the veto threat and stand strong with the people of Minneapolis who are demanding real accountability and change. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 298, Aluchi Omega.
Hey, Council President Bender, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Cool. Hey, y'all, it's Aluchi. Most of you know me, unless you're Lainey Palmasano and Lisa Goodman, because you don't take our calls. But I wanted to start with a quote that I think is very important right now, from Andre Lord, and she says, "When I dare to be powerful to use my strength in the service of my vision, then it becomes less and less important whether I am afraid." You all have a choice right now, and that choice is to lean in and make a change for the better, not for just black folks, not just for queer folks, not just for, but for all of us. You have a choice in this moment to take the fuel that we saw in May, in June, in July, in August, and utilize that towards a new vision of safety for everyone. And that is a big, big responsibility, and I know that you all are scared, but it's something that you have to do in this moment, because we know that the "both and" rhetoric is what happened when George Floyd was killed. The "both and" rhetoric is what happened when Jamar Clark was killed.
Thank you. Speaker 299, Chris Weatherly. Speaker 300, Chuck Turcik. Speaker 300, Chuck Turcik. Speaker 301, Colleen Kepler.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Colleen, Ward 13. Tonight I speak on behalf of the Crime Prevention Specialist. In a recent meeting, I heard from this council that there was engagement with CPS officers, and that CPS would be supportive of moving out of MPD into NCR. But after engaging with CPS myself, I learned that they are not on board, and they were never approached by council members or the innovation team. This is what they've told me. They say they have made great enrollments among police and neighborhoods, problem-solving around crime trends, but now they are disinvited from community meetings. So many of their coworkers are gone, and it distresses them not because their job is harder, but because they see neighborhood people suffer. Residents are being victimized twice by the criminals and then again by this council. Still, they dig deep every day to build bridges between community and police. They actually care. Mayor Frye, if you need to, please veto this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. 302, Mike Hollenbeck.
This is Chuck Turcik, 300.
Hi, Mr. Turcik, go ahead, we'll come back to you, Mr. Hollenbeck.
Thank you for beaming me up to the enterprise again, and thank you for the many, many hours you have put in on this proposed budget. One small item may be symbolic. When you moved the MPD Public Information Office to the Communications Department, Council Member Fletcher said, "You really should hear from the journalists." So at the next meeting, Council Member Goodman brought a statement from the Minnesota Society of Professional Journalists, and they opposed the move. Fletcher was unfazed and you passed the motion anyhow. Now, on December 7th, the motion was made to move MPD Communications back to the MPD, and the Director of the Communications Department supported the idea. That failed. So we have the journalists, the police, and the Communications Department all opposed to this idea, but you did it nevertheless, all in the guise of bringing the MPD within the greater enterprise. Please beam me back to the planet, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hollenbeck, number 302.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Mike Hollenbeck. I'm a proud resident of Ward 4 on the north side, a homeowner and a business owner. I want to thank my council rep, Philippe Cunningham, and the other council members who were brave enough to put forward the Safety for All Amendment, and I encourage the council to keep pushing to reimagine public safety as a right and a benefit for everyone, regardless of what they look like or where they live. For too long, policing has operated as an instrument of harassment, intimidation, brutality, and murder for people of color in our city. It's time to address the root causes of violence and build new systems that work to keep us all safe. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Speaker 303, Dave Bickeng.
I would like to...
300. Welcome.
Hello, Dave Bickeng, Ward 8. Please amend the budget to fully fund an alternative to police-only mental health response, as proposed by CUAPB, rather than the watered-down approach coming from the City 911 Working Group. CUAPB has spent over a year doing thorough research. Their plan is supported by many others, including NAMI. It prioritizes responders with mental health experience and credentials, not ENTs. This plan should be implemented citywide and 24 hours a day, instead of the pilot programs in the current budget. CUAPB has presented a full roadmap to implementation with budget amounts. A number of City Council members have indicated interest or support. CUAPB was even encouraged to submit the language for a budget amendment, which it has done. I am very disappointed that no council member has even brought this proposal forward. We need to create mental health teams that can actually reduce the need and cost for police response. Please pass this amendment tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 304, Jesse Mortenson.
Hey, Jesse Mortenson here, Ward 9. I'm calling to thank the City Council for forwarding, moving forward with the Safety for All Plan. Really appreciate you taking this important step towards change, and I want to say that all the folks who are saying that there's no plan here, I think there is a really good plan, actually, and it's based on 30 years of experience where people have already piloted mental health response. Other cities, Portland, Denver, San Francisco, are moving forward or are about to move forward on similar plans. We're talking about spending 1% of the police budget to start to address 6% to 7% of the 911 calls. So that sounds like a pretty concrete plan, and I don't get where people are missing the vote on that. Nobody's talking about handcuffing anybody. In the case of mental health calls, you actually do want to move the response from police to mental health professionals. It doesn't make sense to say both, because in the case of police, we have a long history of violence, unnecessary arrests, escalation of problems. That's the case we use the plan in.
Thank you. Speaker 305, Rick Reuter.
Hi, this is Chris Weatherly, 299. It didn't work before.
Hello, I'm Speaker 282, I'd like to go.
All right, I'm hearing folks chime in. I heard Chris Weatherly, 299. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. I've been Ward 8.
We only have a few minutes left.
This is Rick Reuter. I started speaking and was interrupted. I don't know what happened technically. Can I start over, please?
A person who came earlier. Go ahead, Mr. Reuter, we'll come back to you, Mr. Weatherly.
Thank you. Great. My name's Rick Reuter, I live in Ward 11. I hear and agree with many of my fellow neighbors and citizens that we need major transformation in the way policing is done in our community. But this all-out attack, however, is counterproductive and damaging. When you want radical change and reform, destabilization is not the right way to do it. Wait for the independent staffing study that you funded, get the proper plan that addresses the social and safety issues of our city, and please, please, work with the police chief and give him the room to address the immediate needs of our city. Please do not put arbitrary caps in an attempt to destabilize our safety. Mayor Frye, I support your veto if this budget, if the City Council continues to undermine the chief and continues to destabilize our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 299, Chris Weatherly.
Hi, this is Chris, thanks for having me back on. I live in Ward 8. Thank you. I wanted to say that, like some of the other white collars on this line, I'm scared of the violence that we're seeing in the city, because when an agent of the state can kill a man in the street by kneeling on his neck, that scares me. When armed men are patrolling my community without accountability, that scares me. I haven't seen this apocalyptic crime wave I'm hearing about. I feel safe when I walk around my neighborhood, but a lot of people don't have that privilege. When a lot of my brown and black neighbors go out, they have to worry if they're going to become a statistic. This is a credible fear, unlike the baseless paranoia that some of the other white and affluent collars have reported. I would urge the council members not to let them frame this debate around property and imaginary fears. This debate is about the real police violence suffered by BIPOC residents. Please pass Safety for All and pass the People's Budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Just have a few minutes left before we hit 9:30. 306 is Kathy Higgins-Victor.
Hello, my name is Kathy Higgins-Victor, and I've lived in Wards 10 and 11 for the last 35 years. My family was recently the victim of an armed carjacking, and I would like to ask the City Council to stop grandstanding and start fixing the escalating violent crime in our city. I support the mayor's police budget for MPD. City Council knows that they can use the Transforming Public Safety Reserve to fund the Safety for All budget, but they are choosing to politicize our public safety and punish MPD. The Safety for All budget does not address the current escalating violence. It is irresponsible and reckless to guess today what the size of our police force should be without any data or research. The City Council does not have well-thought-out plans for transforming MPD, and you're putting my safety at risk by restricting the chief's ability to do his job. I support the mayor's veto, and I support...
Thank you. Speaker 307, Al Geeson.
Hi, I'm 278, Tess Dornfeld.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Tess Dornfeld, Ward 3. I first want to remind everyone that every city is having a spike in crime stats right now. It's not because of the sick-out by MPD, it's happening nationwide. We're also in the midst of an unprecedented global crisis from the pandemic, which only underscores the well-supported fact that crime rates are unrelated to the numbers of cops. This is a fully funded MPD. It is failing, and it has failed for 150 years. But the programs in the Safety for All and the People's Budget have been tried, tested, and proven over and over again in city after city. We're ready to implement them, they're effective, and they will move us onto the path that we need to start with. What would be irresponsible and untenable would be to veto the budget, so I urge the council to maintain the amendments that you've already approved and keep the Safety for All budget. The time is now. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker 307, Al Geeson.
Hi, it's Al Geeson, and thanks for maybe letting me have the last word on this.
That's you, go ahead. Thank you, sir.
Clearly, alternative methods of public safety are required. But now, in the middle of a crime wave, is not the time to take money from the MPD for unproven programs. I urge you to find that money elsewhere. I urge you to find that money elsewhere. I ask that the council restore the mayor's budget, and at a minimum, eliminate the 750 officer cap. If the Safety for All budget is passed, I ask the mayor to veto it. Would fully support that. Thank you. Al Geason.
Thank you. That concludes the time that we have for our public hearing. Mr. Cook, my understanding is that the technical team will need to have a recess before we are able to come back for the amendment portion of our meeting and the adoption of our budget. I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and thank everyone so much for coming out to speak. If you were one of the handful of people that didn't get to speak who signed up today, you can email us to the email address that was on the screen, and we appreciate everyone's engagement so much, over the hours of testimony, the many meetings in all of our wards, the engagement that all of you have really stepped up to participate in. Your voices have been really important. So now we will take that recess that is needed so that the technical team can reset the Mr. Clerk, is 20 minutes sufficient, or would you prefer a 30-minute recess?
Madam President, we can make it work within the 20 minutes, and I think, just to be simple, if we can say that the meeting will recess until 9:50, and that the council would reconvene at 9:50 to take up the resolutions that constitute the budget, we would be ready to go.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So we will take that recess, and we can be to conclude our business at 9:50 PM. Thanks again for everyone who has come to speak.